Well, he.
He should be a lot nicer.
Okay.
Shelly, I have mine.
Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone to our South Weaver City Council meeting this morning on this beautiful Saturday morning. Our retreat plan for today and that discussion will be throughout the day. We're welcome here. It's about nine or two on Saturday, the twenty eighth of January one twenty three. We begin with the pledge allegiance by Councilwoman Petty and then we'll add an opening third about a trial for this.
Please stand and remain with me.
I would like to leave this city alive in this state of America. To the rightful citizens, one nation under God, in the ritual of every fee and justice for all.
Bringing from here. Our most gracious Father in heaven, we are grateful to gather again this morning for this South River City dying retreat. I'm grateful for many good people that work together to help keep our community safe and sound and moving forward in the right direction. We pray for thy guidance today as we talk about the many things that are before us, that we might be able to understand one another and be able to communicate the ideas that we have, be able to recognize the best directions to move forward and the things to plan and make adjustments and we are grateful for the many men and women who worked to keep us safe. We pray for the leaders of the city and the state and this country. They may be guided by thy inspiration and direction. We may be able to fulfill our views and responsibilities with integrity and correctness. We again are grateful for all the blessings that we do enjoy, the opportunity to be here this day. Thus, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you, Quinn. Appreciate everybody coming out on this Saturday morning. Appreciate all that everyone does for the city of South Weaver. Uh, it was a great activity that we had last night. I'm not reading into this this morning. And it was real interesting to see the different, the thought went through his exercise. It was really cool to see how different we are in the way that we think and the way that we perform are fast and and it takes nucleus, like people like that. Now they looked around and I saw, you know, the members of the uh, the council was setting a different, maybe the members of the staff was setting a different tables and and that's what it takes to then all come together and be able to uh have a good working uh, relationship and and good for the the city to uh to have all those different aspects and people's thoughts come together and then as one, be able to unite and carry out the duties that we have as a microofficial and the staff member. So I thought that was a good last minute. Hopefully, we can get through this today and everyone will feel the benefits of doing this. I think it's gonna, I think we've got it set up. But uh, we can do that and everybody will uh enjoy this day. And appreciate you giving up your Saturday, the Saturday to do this. And I'm sure all the members of our city appreciate all that you do. And with that, I'll turn the time to you, Dave.
No training items or Jamie?
No, we'll give it. Dave will.
It's my fault.
You're tactically visual.
Sometimes it's like right now, would you want to go down there so we can get it with the recording?
Okay, what we'll do is we're gonna go around the room. Somebody done it on recording. Just uh give us your name and what you do for the city. Okay, I'm the mayor of South Weaver.
Quick story quiz, sitting council.
Marvel, finance director.
Chuck Clark, transcriber. Lisa Smith, reporter.
Clark, the public work.
Brandon Jones, city engineer.
Shaylee King, community relations.
Brian Peterson, treasurer.
Derek Tompkins, fire chief.
David Larson, city manager.
Trevor Cahan, community services director.
Elizabeth Patel, investigative analyst.
Jamie Cox, Lieutenant, Davis County Sheriff's Office.
Bill Dills, city council.
Curtis Brown, recreation.
Kayla Albert, city council.
Blair Halverson, city council.
Jamie Bladesley, city attorney.
Angie Petty, city council.
Okay, thank you very much. Jamie, the floor is yours.
The mayor said we're gonna have fun and we printed out this man, so. At my table last night, there was a conversation about over dinner, who watches Parks and Rec and who doesn't watch Parks and Rec? And I confess to everybody that I really can't watch it. It just feels to me like a documentary. Do a lot of work in a lot of different cities and you see the things on that show and I take my head and say, yep, I've seen it over and over. But my kids, as they've gotten older, have figured out that city council meetings are broadcast on YouTube. And so they know my law partners because they're in and out of my office. And so they'll sometimes say, you know, who's meeting tonight? And I'll tell them and they'll try to pull up the meeting. They tease me that it's Parks and Rec and I was at a meeting once and I guess they turned it on and watched it. It's not South Weaver, it's a different city. The conversation was an hour and a half long on the topic of whether they wanted four or six swings of the new playground, you know? I guess if you get four, you can make them taller and they're more fun for all the kids. But if you get six more kids coming to them, they couldn't decide. And so I told my kids, I said, they're not all that mundane. And they said, okay, well, who's meeting tonight? I said, well, the city's open their meeting. Why don't we turn it on? My law partner Todd's there. And they said, okay, and we turned it on. They had a forty-five minute debate over whether the new surface for their playground should be all black or black speckled with purple. So they totally don't believe that we do anything serious in silly council meetings. I thankfully know otherwise and there um, there can be consequences if we do things wrong. And so we're gonna talk a little bit today about the things we want to do right so we can get that really important playground business finished. Uh, so ethics and open meetings. I'll start, um, my plan with the training today is we're not gonna do a comprehensive training of all of these things. We've done it before. I'm gonna touch on some of the high points and then I have a few scenarios for us to walk through at the end. We'll take as much time as we need, but I don't think we have to take a lot of time. Frankly, we have a really, really accident city council in South Weaver and I don't think we need to dwell on these topics a lot of time. So, open meetings has this wonderful language where the rule is a meeting is open to the public unless it's closed. And it means nothing until you start to peel apart on what does the meeting mean and what does close mean? And so a meeting means anytime you have a public body that's doing the public business with a quorum present to discuss, receive comments, or act upon something they have jurisdiction for, then it's a meeting. So if you're together for dinner, together at church, together at a sporting event, not a public meeting. Anytime you're gathered and discussing something that is part of city business, it is a meeting. And where it gets a little bit tricky is you can have a meeting inadvertently on a Facebook thread if everybody's commenting and email thread, a text exchange. And so my admonishment would just be thinking in your mind, are we, is this city business and could we have a quorum present in this that you're conversating regardless of how it's happening? And if you do, then it either needs to stop or you need to have people peel off of the conversation where it's something less than a quorum for that meeting. And then the next question is, well, when can you close it? When do you not have to have a public? It's, you have to begin with an open meeting. You announce the reason for closing the meeting. You have a two-third vote. And then these are the kind of the most frequent reasons why a city council would close meetings and it's personnel type discussions, uh, real estate discussions, litigation. And then from time to time, there will be a different decision which the councils involved and they'll have to close. So quick question, yeah. And so let's just pretend Blair invites all of us over to the barbecue. And we start talking about somebody.
Can you say, hold on, can you even, I don't think you Blair.
My wife asked me like, what does Blair do? We go over to the mayor's house. We have a barbecue. We all sit here talking and we start talking about someone or something, you know, we gossip. Can we just decide there? Cause we're, we're all right there. Can we actually go, okay, um, let's open a meeting real quick. Uh, let's close the meeting? Or does it have to be fully? We've gotta have a transcript. We have to have a recorder. We have to have all that. Yeah, the latter. You have to have twenty-four hours notice before you can meet as that terms defined. Okay. Under the law. So if you, if that conversation starts turning, you say that it paused, we need to, we need to schedule a time to go through this. We talked about it and then it has to be noticed. They have to be recorded. There have to be minutes taken and then there are deadlines and Lisa's phenomenal about all of this, where she has to publish the recording and she has to make sure the draft transcript and minutes or not transcript, the draft minutes are up. So no impromptu meetings, right? Let's get it correct. You can, there are circumstances where you can hold an emergency meeting. And it doesn't really define in the code what is and isn't an emergency. So there's some judgment to apply there. Um, I've seen cities hold emergency meetings for emergency personnel matters, real emergency safety and security type matters. And I've also seen them help for morning and day things like a leaky roof and they had to get a contractor out and they didn't have budget for that. And so they felt an emergency meeting to take care of it. So they can.
They still have to be noticed.
Correct. Yeah. So you still publish and notice for those meetings. You just don't read the point of the promise. Any other questions about open meetings?
Just to follow up on that, the Facebook or social media. Some people don't understand that and they'll throw something out. Why is this person responding and then?
Yeah.
You know, I, I personally, I basically decided not to respond to any of such things. Because they won't be blessed just that way. You can talk face to face with people, but it's I don't, people kinda comes there, well, why didn't you respond? You know, they challenged you there.
Yeah.
I'm talking face to face. Yeah, I'm not gonna make it an open meeting.
Yeah, probably. I appreciate that. If you ever feel the need to to say something like, I hear you, but this isn't the time for the commentation. I think that's okay. That's okay.
So they shouldn't be responding on to people?
What you, where it gets tricky is it relates to open meetings is if you have somebody put something out there that's policy or city business related, you know, can you believe they're doing this here? And then there's a lengthy conversation about it in the comments thread that goes on for a while. The moment you have three of your five voting council members commenting or being a part of that thread, arguably, it's a meeting. And if you didn't notice it and if that, I've seen in some places where that conversation has gone so far as, well, at the next council meeting, I'm voting this and this is why. And it becomes the discussion that ought to occur during the council. Now, at that last training that I talked to you about, um, they did say that, that it's only if you're in deliberation of something that is an action, whether it's an action that's pending or not, it didn't necessarily say clear. But if there were four or five of you not talking about something that's on the docket or something that's not, um, you know, if, if you're all talking and everyone's like, yeah, we ought to get rid of my Gatsby housing. Well, that's not something that's going to be in action in front of the city council and they can talk during that. So a bit of a rhetorical question, is it or is it not the function of the city council to establish zoning standards? Yes, obviously. Yeah. So I think any, I think a conversation not in a public meeting with a quorum present about what the city zoning standard should be, whether it's noticed or not, is arguably a violation of the act. It's a little bit of a blurred line. And where it gets really tricky is where I've seen cities stumble and in some cases, result in litigation is a council member or many council members will begin talking about something not knowing that an applicant has come to city staff to ask questions about things. And if that question about, you know, was there or is there? And I can talk about another example in the ethics content and get there. A board member of an entity that really, really put the entity in a tough spot because they engaged in activities they shouldn't have not knowing that there were these other things happening, you know, within the organization. I think that's less likely in a city of South Weaver size because you have a pretty good idea of you can understand kind of the full scale and scope of development, applications, things that are coming in. In your more populated cities, that gets tricky. Because you, there's no way, there's no way for the manager, for all the staff to communicate every single application they received through council. Now, except for those that have. Is that helpful? Yeah. Um, and if you ever have kind of moment by moment thing that you feel like you ought to engage, because I understand the the constituent service side of it's important for you all. You need to be able to respond and communicate and sometimes social media is a way to do that. Um, PingMe and I can help you kind of work through that specific situation. I don't wanna be like text call, you know? That's a text tone.
Did you get, what do you say now then?
Hit me up. I've never heard PingMe since I heard like the bomb, so.
Just touch in truly, I, you know, twenty-four thousand. And don't take this advice as you can't initiate a conversation on Facebook to say, hey, this is an issue that matters and I wanna hear from constituents. What you have to watch for is this is the conversation that matters and I'm gonna have a Facebook chat with the city council about what we're gonna decide. Maybe we should notice a public meeting and say, we're gonna do it on Facebook and just have a chat. Yeah, beer glutton. And then you all have seen the, it's over the last few years, there's been a number of different public candidates that have gotten in hot water because folks on the on the board or on the council have been texting each other while actively deliberating. So you'll want to avoid that. Text and if the message remains on your phone, it can be a public record. You may have to disclose it, so. Um, you know, have those conversations. Only the state legislators voted to let themselves delete all of their. Yeah, they can do it. Yeah. There's.
Are you staying?
Yeah. They voted the new one that everybody has to do it. Everybody has to maintain it on your phones and anything like that. You can't have a separate phone to do it and they excluded the entire state legislator.
Well, that's this time.
Um, no, it was, if it was last or the one before that. Yeah, there's a higher level. Yeah, when it comes to open meetings, private deliberations, public records. Are we gonna get into closed meetings? That's all I had planned on opening and closing. Okay. Sorry, everyone. Um, so we just had a closed meeting. Does that mean once you walk out the doors, you can't talk about it at all? Like even to another council member or to the mayor or to the city manager? It's what happens in stays in. I've always interpreted it as what's discussed in the closed meeting has to stay between the people who were present at the closed meeting. And I'll add a really significant caveat to that. That you have to beware of the quorum requirement if you're to have those conversations. Um, but you cannot, it's, it would be a crime to disclose what is discussed in a closed meeting to somebody who's not present in a closed meeting. How big of an right?
If you want, I'll share for the next.
And why, why do you decide this?
Protect it from you guys.
Well, so you have to, um, be careful in that situation. I, I think it's best often not to talk about it, but if you feel like you have to. I, I get that memories fade. My memory fades and sometimes you need to call somebody and say, hey, I think we talked about this aspect of um, if it's a property acquisition, you know, hey, didn't we talk about this during close session? I think it'd be okay to have that conversation. They can say, yeah, we did and this is, this is what we talked about. In two cases in the last two, three months, um, within four days, it was posted online on Facebook. That stuck directly out of the closed sessions.
I used to invest in.
No, it hit me off. I came straight to the mayor on that one. Um, because, yeah, it was, it, it was very apparent that somebody had all the information. I mean, it was just spelled right out to me. So, okay, not advisable and. That kind of thing's concerning. Um, there, and there can, we haven't had any closed sessions lately that aren't really sensitive topics. But especially when you get into personnel matters or parent business matters. You can damage somebody's reputation forever if you have those conversations outside of. These one development. Okay, ethics will hold that back. Hold it because we get into it. So, this is my new admonishment. If you ask where is the line on ethics, you're asking the wrong question because I read the Utah rules as establishing a minimum standard. And we all ought to have our own personal measure of where do we wanna draw the line? As it relates to appearances and to the public business, uh, that we have. So, three things basically that the municipal officers and employees ethics act covers and for um, those from the sheriff's office and from the fire department, you may also have requirements from the public officers and employee traffic that that apply to your works. Maybe a little bit of a, a double set of requirements. The municipal officers are a little bit more relaxed on some things because it allows for continued involvement after, um, declaring that you have a conflict of interest or a potential conflict of interest. And uh, as Dave Church, who used to do the work for the League of Cities and Counties to say, congratulations on getting elected office, you now qualify to commit about a dozen different topics that you didn't have to commit to. So disclosure, when is it required? There are some written disclosures that are required and there are some oral disclosures that are required. You have to make a disclosure in writing if you have a conflict of interest that involves a business regulated by the city. If you are doing business with the city, if you have a personal interest or
Not a big cat.
If you have a personal interest or investment that presents a conflict of interest with your city responsibilities. Or if you assist or advise on a city transaction, basically helping somebody as an advisor or lobbyist of sort. And there's a little asterix on the final one and that's because the disclosure has to occur at a certain interval in relation to the decision that's being made. My own advice, if you have these kinds of conflicts, I would recommend not only making the disclosure, considering the refusal. I think that's the safest course. It keeps you out of trouble. It avoids any appearance of you doing anything improper. Uh, but the law requires disclosure, not refusing. And then again, there is, you have to speak out loud your disclosure or any of the items on the lap during the open meeting and before discussion on that topic occurs. And if you have any questions, if you see an agenda and you think that it may present a conflict of interest, reach out to me, send me an email, PingMe.
Responding.
You. That's a great. It's true always. Anyway, I can, I can help walk you through it before the meeting occurs so that it's prepared and it's on the agenda. I know that you have in front of you annual conflict of interest disclosure forum, so you'll wanna fill those out. Make sure to get to Lisa and she'll keep those. What crimes are available to you? You can disclose confidential information and use it to your financial advantage. You can use your. That's a Pelosi law? You can, well, you can pick your pair of Utah elected officials. They give you a US. But privately, uh, you can use your privilege of your office or your position for economic gain or secure special privileges. I think you've seen in the news probably two or three times a year, some of you. Hold on, refer to the UI and say, you know who I am. Uh, and it always now ends up broadcast all around the world. Uh, but if you wear a shirt that says it instead. The verbalized. You can take gifts or you can provide access or advice and be paid to help somebody with city business. These are the ones that tend to happen most often. Any other questions on ethics before we move on to a little touch on land use? Okay, we'll move to land use. We'll work through some examples and then we'll be done. So on land use decisions, I don't wanna belabor this. We've been through the lengthy training, but I, a reminder that as a city council, you make legislative and administrative decisions. And the type of information you can use to make those different decisions. Um, it's a very important, but you have to have different levels of evidence or policy reasons for making those choices. And the basic difference is if it's a legislative decision like what zoning do I want to adopt for an area within the city? You can use any policy based rationale for making that choice. You know, it, it could be as simple as I don't like the way that it would allow the structures to be oriented. And you can turn that down or it could be, I don't think my neighbors would support that use. Then you just reject it. The difference is when you're making an administrative decision where somebody has an entitlement and they're coming forward for an application and just looking at, does it fit or does it not fit with the requirements of city code? You then have to have evidence to support your decision on those points. And so one area where that frequently comes up is if you say, I don't think they have enough parking. You can't just say, I don't think they have enough parking, so I'm gonna reject it. You have to have evidence to show that the parking they have is insufficient. So you would say, I'd like to see a parking study and then you can see the parking study and then make a decision based on that evidence or information. That was your question.
But if they don't do parking study. And.
It can require that you come back. You don't, you don't have to make a decision immediately.
If it's for, um, let's say it's a development, that there's a development agreement. You don't feel like there's enough parking, then what?
And the end of the ball, it spells out the specific number.
If it, yeah, but if it's still not the.
Then you're.
Still don't feel like that sufficient.
You're bound to this. You're powered. Everybody's in the lead of that agreement. So like on a PC level, if you just make a recommendation like, well, let's send up a recommendation to, you know, have a park or to put a fence in or these kind of things. None of that is legally binding. They're usually administrative at the time when they're having it. So is that even worth saying it and sending it out for? I think it is. You know, there's some negotiation, these things often what they look like and. I think it is. You know, there's some negotiation, I mean, since often what they look like and. You don't have a cooperative developer who may be willing to. Do things a little bit differently. Just keep in mind that if you reject something where they have an entitlement, then. My ability to defend the action of the council becomes more difficult. Okay, a few quick examples that we'll run through, and these are real examples during the last six months or so. Your spouse on the real estate development company, that company has a rezon application attending before the city council. What do you do or what actions do you consider? Safe as course, yeah, a hundred percent safe as course. Um the legal requirement would be disclosure, but like recusal is what I would. You attend church with a long time friend who is developing his family's property. He stops by your home for a visit. The evening before the city councils to act on his application to supplement his property. What do you do? This happens, I would argue, every single month in every single city.
Oh, do you do?
Tell your friends to vote how you want them to and then recuse yourself.
Well, I would have to recuse myself. Half of what comes through. No, you get it.
Blair's touching on a really good question, which is, is it a conflict of interest? And you're, you may have some neighbors that will say, well, yeah, you're really close to that person. It's a conflict. It is not a conflict under law, right? Because you do not. Enjoy any kind of economic benefit if that development gets approved or disapproved. Yeah, um that's kind of the trigger for do you have to mention it or not mention it? Now, there are circumstances where there can be power imbalances in a church context or in a business context. Where you may feel like recusal is appropriate because you want to make sure that. You're not appearing to give some benefit to somebody because. Uh they're your leader or you serve in a leadership capacity with them or you've known them and. You know, played sports with them your entire life, whatever that reason may be. You may want to make that disclosure, you may not to. To your own judgment, but you're not required to under one.
You know, they do some type of uh good old boys law not too long ago. Uh where uh you couldn't have too many people let know the guy um doing something. I can't remember what it was, the the guy at the. Uh conference, the mosquito abatement conference. He's the one that told us about it.
That mentioned that, yeah, there are. I don't know if this is what you're referring to, but. There are certain conflicts of interest that are prohibited in cities, especially if they relate to nepotism law. That don't apply in um cities of a certain size, okay? You're a South Weaver's over that threshold, but for some of the really small towns in Utah. If you exclude the ability to hire family members. Um you simply can't run. I did one in the central part of the state and the. City recorder is the niece of the mayor and their planning directors. His brother and, you know, it just.
Well, Jamie, so your friend talked about to talk to you about. But he comes there and talks to you about the decision to moving, may not subjecting the property. Are you okay to talk to him about that or should we say?
I'm glad you asked that. That is. Yes or no? Yes and no. You have to apply some judgment. If it's an administrative decision that they're coming before the council or the planning commission for. There's some peril in having that conversation because you would receive information that's not included in the record of the decision. And then you you might inadvertently use that to form your judgment on how to decide it. And so if they go that route, I would recommend to them that, hey, I have to make this decision. On the record with evidence to support it. Otherwise, if it's challenged by somebody, we can't support the decision we made. So I'd like to talk to you about it, but I'd like to do it in the city council.
But on the other hand, we're encouraging people to come talk to us about it.
That's where I think you just, you want to think in your mind, what kind of decision am I having to make? And then if there's something you learn in that conversation that you need to have be part of the record. Make sure that it becomes part of the record.
So couldn't you say to them? This is, you know, I have to look at how this has been positively and negatively affect the community. So.
Yeah, for sure.
To let them know. I can't really do any favors, we'll talk about it though, you know.
Well, you would think that we're still able to have. Um it because if you can have all the opposing views come over to your house, knock on the door and give you some. You know, their piece of information that those that are pro for it and women people that would do it. That they would should have that same right to to come over. But what you're saying, if it gets too close. Well, either vote or not.
I I guess I'm suggesting a little bit of judgment in what's discussed and how those things happen. Here's where I've seen this go sideways. Is. Development proposal that required tight access. And the developer was friends, neighbors and friends with somebody on the planning commission. They said, hey, why don't you come over and look at this with them? They did a site visit. They walked through the whole site. They looked at it all. You are allowed to go to a site and look at it. But then in the meeting. He decided. I he just voted against it, but didn't state any reason why. And so when it's challenged, there's not anything on the record as to why he made that decision. Was it administrative decision? And after the fact, he said, well, I denied it because I thought the access was too tight. There's no way to make that turn safely. Well, is there evidence to support that? No, because it was all discussed outside of the public meeting.
What if he said it as part of his bill?
Then it wouldn't be a different matter. You'd be able to support it. Last one. A developer has applied to rezon property in the city. You're not familiar with the property or the surrounding neighborhood. The developer invites you to visit the property for a tour with other members of the city council. So what issues pop into your head here? Okay, how many members of the city council, right? If it's fewer than a quorum, then you can make that visit and do that. The issue we just talked about is something that should be top of mind, but if you learn things during that site visit. Then state those on the record when you're in the open meeting to just say, hey, I went. And I visited the site. I looked at the situation. I'm not sure this setback is going to be sufficient. City engineer, did you measure it? You can then have all that conversation on the record. You know, introduce it there. Any other questions? Right, I think that's it. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Twenty twenty-two year in review and twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I'll start with this one. And it's my. Pleasure to be able to go over some of the larger city items and city council items, and then we'll let the department have each take a turn. The mayor specifically requests to hear from each department head. So. Um last year, twenty twenty-two, this was really fun exercise for me to go back and and review all the things that have been accomplished and talked about. And and I hope you get that same excitement as I go through it. Obviously, the first and foremost was we had two new elected officials last year and I'm glad Jamie brought up Arch and Grant because. This is a good poster and I and I think it is apropos in a lot of things. Wesley Nope said, there's nothing you can't do if we work hard, never sleep and shirk all other responsibilities in our lives. And I think for council members, it feels like that at times. So. Kudos to you guys. There were twenty-seven public city council meetings and twelve public planning commission meetings in twenty twenty-two. A quick review of all that was done during that. Um two hundred and seventy-six total agenda items. I put the last couple of years just for comparison sake. There were fifteen ordinances passed in twenty twenty-two and fifty-one resolutions. Can you see that?
Yeah.
Um and then the major city code amendment um highlights, I think this is, this was a really interesting list to go back and go, wow, look at the heavy lifting with city code items that we've been talking about for. So long. We talked about private roads. We changed our code enforcement process and and toolbox. All the off-street parking discussion, the entire landscaping code was reviewed and updated. We updated the conflicts of interest code. Um the density calculations. Our short-term rental code we amended. We did the whole adjustment on noise, which happened last year. Um we reorganized the planning commission and they're stipend and we redid the flood control ordinance. So there was a lot of heavy lifting that was done. Yeah, in those type of items. This is just a real quick list. We don't have to spend time on all of them. Um but there's a few things that that stood out to me in this list. The next franchise agreement was a major deal, right? That that's a big one, and we're going to see the benefits of that over the next um, you know, twelve to sixteen months as they. Are constructing that. Um the Hill Air Force Base compatible use plan, we had to have its own separate meeting to go over. And we did the storm grain rates. We did the water conservation plan. We did the twenty-seven hundred east um concept plan. Our streetlight maintenance agreement was a was a really big one. Um in terms of putting a process in place moving forward, the moderate income housing plan um was a major item that we discussed and. Um we'll be coming forward again here next month to finalize because the state asked for some minor amendments to it. We talked about um special event fees. We had our uh agreement extension with DCSO. And then, of course, all of the development things that took place. Um from final acceptance to the approval process. And the uh digital sign or even the no term on red is something that we tackled last year too. Things to uh. That are coming down the pipe or. Maybe it feels a little bit more like that at times rather than the one. Sometimes it feels like there's a lot that's uh brewing. But we have the public works facility that uh is the major item and we'll be talking about that more today. Um the wellbeing survey results are gonna, you know, we'll have that information sometime this year. The cities that are planning that we've already kicked off and and are going to move forward on. The dust monitoring and the health study that is already in the works that should, you know, should get some more information. All the transportation, water, sewer, um CFP, IFFP, IFA process that's in place. Um the code committee is tackling conditional use permits code right now, which is a major, major one. Um we've got a project in the Weaver River Parkway Trail. Uh we're up. Upgrading and including new city events this year that are already, you know, planned and in the work. We've got a lot happening, the law enforcement contract, and we want to focus on some emergency management training this year. Um and I'll let Trevor talk about that and his stuff. And and then, of course, the economic development conversations that are taking place, hopefully will come to fruition as well this year. So. There's a lot still in the works that is that is coming, let alone any new items that, you know, come up in twenty twenty-three. So. That's a a real broad and brief overview. We don't need to take a ton of time, but are there questions or comments based on? All the work that was done by the city council this last year?
I have one. That you all may not be aware of. There there the bill being considered by the state legislature, I think, is how bill two nine one that relates to short-term rentals. And there's language in that that I think is the direct result of your work on. Povlestone. That allows cities to require a business licensing process for. Short-term rentals. And in every conversation I've been in. This month with different cities about what do we think about short-term rentals and how to do this? You know, inevitably, somebody says, well, there was that case in South Weaver. So kudos to you. That was a heavy lift over several years, you know, someone I was hearing a lot before. Um and but. All of you deserve credit for that. You don't always think that your work's going to kind of ripple out and extend beyond. The boundaries of your city, but it sure did on that one.
What's that? Is it one again?
Two ninety-one, I believe. That's really, that's my little.
So HB two ninety-one?
Well, several cities have used the code too as a template.
Okay, I'll hand it over to uh sheriff's office. Before before you get started, let me say one thing. Um I think. Everybody got a chance to see uh Josh Boucher last night. Um he joined Jamie. That was kind of an official baton passing. Um if you didn't know or didn't hear, Jamie's been reassigned. And so this is kind of her last official act with us as being our, you know, police chief, so to speak. And so um. Josh Boucher is going to be taking that role, and that's why he was here last night and as an official hand up. So. Publicly and in front of everybody, thank you, Jamie, for all that you've done.
We've had a lot happen in twenty twenty-two. Um so all the stats that are going to be shown are are collected in twenty twenty-two. We're going to be throughout about the full statistics and all some investigation statistics as well. Um so over the course of twenty twenty-two, we had four thousand three hundred sixty-three hours total in South Weber. We had eleven uh one thousand one hundred seventy-five dispatch calls, those people calling nine one one saying, hey, I need I need some support here. Uh we had eight hundred fifteen on view calls. That's an officer saying something out in public and saying, I need to think about this. Person crimes of those, the calls for service are broken up into person crimes. There were seventy uh property crimes, a hundred seven. Public order, meaning uh society criminal. So this could be like graffiti, drugs, stuff like that. Forty-three public order non-criminal, uh one thousand fifty-seven soybeans. Um and then. Graphic, I don't know that number, isn't it? We will go into the other spots.
Yeah.
Um and then uh no report required, meaning that they showed up and nothing was, everything was unfounded. Um it's eighty-six.
The dispatch calls nine one one, we average three a day.
So if you think. At night, somebody sees a suspicious caller call, and they will want to report that, or. The maverick calls and says, you know, some dude loitering or they get a call that. Vehicles have been parked in the parking lot or in the cul-de-sac during the snow season or all those things now were. A call in that create generated.
Large city percentage wise, is that normal? Do we have that many? Nine one one calls?
Calls for service, yes. I would, I would say, I can't tell you. Right, right, right.
Yeah, so and and if you look, so the public order non-criminal, so that can be like, you know, loitering or something like that. Um half of those are are non-criminal, half of those calls are non-criminal approximately. Um and I would be more than happy to get you a relative number as opposed to like a big city or something like that. That's something that I can provide at the at the the next council meeting on the, I think it's the seventh, is that something that the the council would like?
What about trucks coming without a cover? I know that Andrew.
You know what? I don't keep track of this specifically, but if I were. I definitely keep in track. That does, that includes all calls for service, so not emergency.
Anything a deputy was given information.
So does this feel like the other day you're up here by the intersection with Joe? Bill said that. Highway patrol had someone pulled over on South Weaver Drive. Does that include any highway patrol? It excludes any highway patrol. That's why I'm curious.
Yeah, this is solely, yeah, this is solely David's journey, yeah. Yeah, this is solely, yeah, this is solely David's journey, yeah. Um, so. A moving violation, so these are citations, so moving violations, we have forty eight. Non moving violations, twenty parking violations, sixty six. Written warnings, there were thirty, and then speeding tickets, there was a hundred and twenty eight. Um, and then there was a hundred and eighty four other citations, so that could be a number of things, that could be a fixed ticket, that could be a misdemeanor, that could be an arrest, it could be a number of things.
Also with our data, just for full disclosure, still in mobile, the technology that we use. And over the course of the sheriff's office having that um program, it has kind of morphed into the way that. The deputies are able to enter uh an incident, so I don't know the best way to describe it, but say we had a burglary. There should just be a couple ways to enter that, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be like twenty ways. Currently, there's like twenty ways, and so when we're pulling data, it's extremely, we've been really. Trying to be, we were probably putting on the low side just because we wanted to be clear and concise and not. And played it at all whatsoever. I feel like these numbers probably didn't capture everything, but we're really working hard with Elizabeth. To refine what options there are, so there's only. The true number of ways, like the winter parking, I can pull that up under. South Weaver City Ordinance, I can pull it up on the winter parking, I can pull it up under county code, so when I'm pulling those stats, I'm like. I get different numbers every time, and so we've had to really, we've been working over this past year extremely hard to try to narrow that down to get. Better data, I could kind of garbage in, garbage out, right? So. Um, it's gotten a ton better and with the dispatch centers consolidating, a bit of that problem has been whatever we use as a sheriff's office has to be consistent with. All the other agencies that use that program and gave us some. So onward and upward, only gonna get better with the numbers, but it's. Been a little bit of a trial to figure out all the different ways that we're. One definitely enter at this rate, we get training out and to get all the all the things corrected for this, so.
And that's that's part of my responsibility at the sheriff's office is to help clean up data and refine how we're documenting things so that we can get. Very accurate numbers and again, just to piggyback on what uh Lieutenant Fox was saying, all of these numbers are conservative, I'm not gonna, there's nothing in here that's. You know, blown out of force or anything like that. Alright, any questions on patrol statistics before we go forward? Alright, so investigation statistics as well, there's two other things I did wanna add. So over the course of this year, I know that you guys have met Danielle Rodriguez, she had come, she's our victims advocate coordinator, she had come um to one of the city council meetings. She's done absolutely fantastic work and uh ended up uh also hiring Alicia Fisher, who's our other uh victims advocate. Um, they're really, really awesome, they're at the disposal of the of the city, they respond on calls. Um, they help with victims on investigations and all the things of that nature, so they've been doing a lot, really, a lot of really awesome work. Um, and so I definitely wanna recognize them as far as what it's not has been able to offer in twenty twenty two. Um, another thing that we've been offering is uh daily intelligence breaks to patrol, so these will include hotspots, so. I pull members to see where the most calls for service are happening and which of those are actionable. Right? And so we'll we'll give direction to deputies to be able to respond more so to that, to those areas. Um, and I know that we're gonna be providing some keepups for the next uh coordinated meetings that I'm happy to provide, so we'll, I'll have some more information to be able to answer some more detailed questions then. Um, we provide a fugitive's list, so individuals who live um in our contract cities who are um who are fugitives and evading and so will. All have all of their information and. Everything about them. I would love to have shown an example, but of course it's a lot, it's a lot of sensitive information, so I'm capable of doing so. Oh, yes, any bulletins, um, you know, hey, attempt to find this person, be able to look out for this. Does anybody identify this this individual, things like that, to try to really bring in on. All of those things.
So we have these briefings that are just more formal.
Um, so I know the font is really, really tiny, but I think it is, I think most of you will have access to this PowerPoint, that's just about right. Fantastic, so um over the course of the year, uh over fifty percent, over fifty percent of the crimes investigated were person crimes coming in at sixty six. Um, about thirty eight percent were property crimes coming in at forty eight, um the number five deaths investigated and eight crimes against society. Uh, and here is listed out all of the different crimes that were investigated and how many of each. This is a much more detailed pie chart, essentially, of the the pie chart of the previous slide. So of person crimes, child abuse, child neglect, uh sex extortion. Um, child endangerment and aggravated assault um were the most highly investigated person crimes. And then of property crimes, uh fraud, theft, vehicle theft and uh criminal vehicle burglary, excuse me, uh were the most. Investigated uh property crimes.
So on that pie chart, uh you've got child neglect and child abuse, if it was the same call, same individual, same case. Is it listed twice then? Because both of those things are just completely separate to find us.
Yes, sir, great question. So um those are in, those are individual incidents that are here investigated. Any other questions about investigation services?
I heard comment about our B, it's burglary that. Is like coming to South Weaver because many people do things unlocked that we hired and other.
That's pretty consistent, I think, because it's impressive, just knowing people feel pretty safe. I think even if you were to go, people live in the suburbs, right? Like unless they're in that. An area that they feel like looks bad, but you have to think people aren't willing to. The areas where they live, it's still things like. They go to where the nicer things are, so we have the same problem in Grides, we have the same problem in West Point. I know our surrounding cities, Cape Cod, Farmington, all that, people feel pretty safe here, which we want them to, but. Don't be naive to things because lock your doors. And when you're home during the day, lock your door, your garage is are shut. Um, keep your keys in the car, a lot of people do that, it still goes through my mind that they leave their car unlocked. And their keys in it and they're actually open all night and you can't want to like miss it, so. A lot of times we love to tie our hands in their car because everybody, you know, it's up here, so. Yeah, I I think that's pretty average, South Weavers, not any different than. Any other country or city that we uh support or help service.
Uh, and and just building on top of that, uh all of, almost every single one of these is a crime of opportunity. Um, we're seeing so few smash and grabs or something will physically actually break into the vehicle, I would say like. Nine point nine bar percent of the time.
And none of those, that's because you left something invisible.
Yeah, yeah, oh, for sure, yeah, yeah, for smashing grabs and stuff, that's something that's possible, but. Nine nine point nine bar percent of the time, it's people just going through and pulling out handles and stuff like that, so. Yeah, just and oftentimes, who with residential burglaries, it'll be the the vehicles unlocked and then the garage door opener is just. Hanging out on the visor and so the whole. Take the visor or push the garage door opener, just lock them themselves, um, so.
The, I think um what you might be talking about though is that. Uh, we did have a rash of cars burglaries, as in the car itself being stolen. And uh Weaver County was saying that that was because. It it was very familiar, you could go in there, grab things on the west end and then hit the freeway and you're gone real quick before you even come in and out.
Yeah, we have the same problem in Fruit Heights and the same problem in. There's access roads, it doesn't, I mean.
And again, nine times out of ten, it's it's a it's a vehicle that is left unlocked with the keys inside or running.
I mean, honestly. Wouldn't believe the things that people will report and it just, I mean. Now it's a prevention, right? No, you're okay, I just like take the two seconds, lock your door, turn the car off, shut your garage, those little things will save you a lot of.
That'll stop you from having your, so like an old silver Ford truck that's not running very well.
Hey, who's next? Noel Park? I hope that you guys just read through these and get one question.
So. The bigger one did put three hundred fifty meters in this year, replacement meter. You know, it's working out pretty good. Because they keep changing the technology and so. We get the replacements for the same price, but we get the nicer. The national meter reading stuff and hopefully in the future we'll have towers. To where the office can just punch you in a reading meter from the office.
How are you getting them then?
Yeah.
Was that?
He was a driver, this is all drive by.
Yeah, right now it's drive by. The, but the towers will use the same meters we're using now, so eventually. When we get the the connects through town, the tower that's. Once somebody calls and wants to have a meter read, shut off or whatever. When they move out, they can do it right at the desk and don't have to send somebody out, get the reading, come back. And it'll also get heightened, you know, when they get the high bill, they can pull it up, they can do a a data log. And see what the meter's been doing last month. And you're gonna face the B M F five track this year, get shoveled down, get after it, so.
I was gonna do it right now.
Oh, just they get the streets lined, replace them after they get faded, so faded, you have to replace them. I know it's hard to believe that eight hundred people have complained in South Weaver, but.
What kinds of things does that include, Mark?
My neighbor threw stuff in my yard. A lot of times we can't do anything about it, you know, so many trees hanging over the fence, we just tell them it's a personal property matter, but. You know, water, we should buy water pressure, low water pressure, my waters mouth. People get backups in their house and their sewer in their house and call the city thinking it's. It's ours, we have to pull the manhole, like, shut the street front. It's a little bit of everything, dead animals, we didn't call animal patrol. But more important than any of this is the stuff we didn't do. It'll be a long time to get those on. We didn't have any lost time accident, uh. We didn't have any top of damage. Anything maybe, our sewer, water, storm sewer. Which is a big thing, most cities always has something going on.
We didn't injure any clans in the park.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my, it's your responsibility for not filtering.
Yeah, but I say, for the most part, public works, I gotta just show up, do the thing and. Like say, I'm gonna hold it not. Any grand thing, then next year, our biggest thing, we worked on the city shop, we have the big water line going on. And we're gonna uh try and do a little different. Method of taking care of our sewers is cheaper, we do a sounding instead of actually camera. So it'll be cheaper if they're. They can send a a sound wave down and down, tell if the pipes powerful, if there's high spots and low spots and bugs, so.
Hey, Mark?
Yeah.
Um, the. What are those things called that we got that monitor?
Meter, slow meter.
The meters, are those sound ones or those?
It's actually a a laser. It's kind of like, it's a ring in the pipe and then there's a laser that shines down the height of the water. And so, and again, how high the water is and how steep the pipe is. It doesn't flow that way, but we've been, we've been moving that around every month.
So this new system you're talking about, we're still able to utilize those stairs. I'm with you.
Don't bite your fingernails and, yeah.
Who's connect?
Who's connect? Oh, yeah, this summer we'll be uh. We'll be working with those guys, we've already. Had some upset people with South Weaver secondary water. Wants to get paid to blue stake their stuff, but. Like say, we got one guy who'd be blue staking all us all summer and stay in front of the guys.
That's because they call six times a week.
Yeah.
They they can't do that.
Yeah, yeah, they can. We can call them and just kind of empty area and just blue stake the whole area for them. Probably stop follow up on the tickets just because it's taking a while, says you have to, it's bigger, but. Or you can just retire and just get your can of blue paint.
You can't do that. I've gone around neighborhoods just putting blue paint down on the roads and they get mad at you.
Actually, my father in law's Marine shirt from when he was in Vietnam.
Bill? Well, he was a good mayor.
Hey, can I click one more, see who's next?
I'm gonna take.
We'll tell him we had to have you here.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to hand the pass?
Before we move on to Brandon, I wanna go back to public works. They didn't, he didn't have a list up here, but they helped us immensely with. The relocation of our areas each time. It was just pretty funny how you could probably. Work to do some of that and we appreciate what they did there. But thank you, Mark.
Now with the new trucks. Really nice. Everybody liking them?
Then we have a couple of guys that sit down, they give every school and the whole shop.
Alright. You go in there. Alright, I have um. My list, if, if. I, I was hoping to throw in a few pictures that may be a little more interesting, but I'm just gonna go through it. These are just some of the highlights of some of the things that we've done this year. Um, some of them are kind of ongoing things, others are just one time things. A lot of this is just to repeat from things that have already been said, so. Streets, we've been working on the transportation master plan. Um, WCG, you guys have seen. When we brought the my thirties uh, summary of plan. Concept layout to you, um, you will be seeing here shortly. An actual, the, the final document to. We did bid out the concrete replacement. This year as its own project, the previous year we had bid out as um. An individual schedule in our stream management project. We got no bids. Uh, in twenty-one. We got one bid in twenty-two and it was so expensive that we opted not to reward it. So in twenty-three, we are going to force. The concrete. And um, include it with the asphalt, because the asphalt guys always wanna do asphalt. And this will make them give us some concrete. Anyway, so we are way overdue on, on concrete, but not at, not at anybody's fault other than just that nobody wants to do it. Just the spot that'll remove or replace is they're, they're, they're just not very appropriate to. To contractor, so. We did the uh. We, we got bids or awarded for the cracko project, but. Winter came a little earlier than. Normal, I guess, and so they basically had to postpone that until the spring. And then we are currently working on the twenty-seven hundred east design. Due to some potential uh, development in that area, they need to know. Where the future runway is going to be, so we've been doing uh, at a concept level. With some design or some elevation element to that. Water, we're nearly complete with the, the water CFP. We did the water conservation plan. And the twenty-twenty-three uh, water projects. Just bid. Few weeks ago, that'll be on your upcoming agenda for award for that, but that's a big project. It's taking the transmission line. It currently runs through the Job Corps campus and running it down the access road. Uh, down to Lincoln Lane. And then on Cornea Drive, there's a section there that's undersized. Or we're replacing that as well, so those were kind of designed as two separate projects that were just grouping together and we bid as one. Um, the meter projects was. Putting source meters up at our uh, west tank and our central tank. And then the reason for those is so that we can accurately account for peak data man to the vision of drinking water. Um, it allows us to get daily read. On how much water is actually going into the system, so we have, previously we had meters for what we're pumping up to the tanks. Um, and like what is delivered from Weaver Basin up to the tanks, but it, because you have tanks, right? You, you fill them. And then it comes out over time, so. There's the delay of that delivery doesn't necessarily always allow you to account directly for what you used on that day. So these meters will read what's going into the drinking. And then by, by being able to do that, then we can accurately account to the division of drinking water, which is uh, now required. Let me cop a rule, um, we just kind of are getting started on that. I won't go into depth of what that really is, cause that's a long discussion, but we need to account for. The material type on the services that serve each home in the city.
Well, yeah.
That'll be a big one.
It's a big one. And if, and if, any of them are there or can't be affirmatively uh. Confirmed that they are not there. Then we have to have them in a replacement plan, so.
Is there any money out there for that?
There is potentially some, um, there's money to do the study at this point, well, we're getting. We're gonna have to send that, we're getting new information that. It may come. Um, in the form of a grant. Or a loan and not a full. The division of drinking water has been um. A little slow in the way they disseminated. The funding aspect of that. They talked about there would be money available and then um, it's. There's, but the application wasn't. Up yet, it just now I think is, they said. This last week, we got information that it's supposed to be posted.
But the study done to determine the. Sorry, the. That is what a year in a little bit of way. That we have to, I can't remember what are the.
We have to send in a, a, a report by September of twenty-four. Of what all of our services are and not just the service from the main to the meter, but the, the, from the main all the way to the home.
And then we have to replace it, it's their responsibility?
Not in that timeframe, but. There's still some question about that, from the meter to the home. There, the EPA is the one that, that, I mean, this comes from the Flint, Michigan thing, right, and this is, this, this is a, you know, federal. National thing that says. Well, we shouldn't have any lead in the water, so. Here, go do this without obviously realizing, you know, how water systems really work and are set up. Anyway, so there's more to come on that. But we started on that. Um, we did the last generated waste connection for their compost site, got that agreement figured out. Um, they will be, I believe, making that connection before this. Um, they haven't contacted me on exact. But I think before this season. Um, so we're ready to do the, the utility theme, um. Every year we get the stormwater um, annual report, we have to turn it in to the state.
Do we get a riveting presentation on that?
If you want one. Uh, capital design is planned for sewer, uh, we, we have been collecting. Flow line information on all the manholes so that we can actually model the system accurately as to what. The flow lines are. A flow line is the bottom of the manhole. So the actual elevation of the line that is, you know, coming into or leaving the manhole. Uh, allows you to know what the slope of your pipe is and what the flow is, and you can model that a lot easier if you have that information. Uh, we also have the, from the flow meters, so we can calibrate what the act, what the computer model is saying with, with what we're actually seeing in the field and seeing how close. The model is actually predicting what, what's going on. Um, sewer management plant also has an annual report and we turn that into the state each year as well. Um, Canada's Park West, you all know about that. Um, the Weaver River Trail, there's. Some, I mean that we've been awarded there, they already mentioned that. The wetlands, I just wanted to let you know, um, that we had done. Went out and took a bunch of pictures to, to document to the Army Corps. Where those are at and what they look like and we will no longer be irrigating them as required because our two years are up. So at this point, we will be able to really decide is a good time to do it. Redelineate and possibly submit for. Those to. Maybe be considered non-jurisdictional. Which means they can go away. If they determine that, but we, we, so we've done everything that we were asked to do at this point, I'm saying. Mapping, I don't, I don't know, um. We, we've made great strides in the mapping abilities, we have. Um, Kyler Thompson from our office is our GIS guy. And um, he's got everything online, uh. We've got some staff maps that allow public works to be able to see all of the utility systems on, you know, just on their phones. And I, that has proven to be super helpful, the other day we met with. Uh, Central Weaver Sewer and we just. You know, pull up our map and you can pat around the whole city or wherever you need to go and click on manholes and. Get the information of sizes of lines and uh, anyway, it's been pretty awesome. So these are some of the things that we worked on specifically this year. We're coordinating with Black McDonald on the streetlights. And that transition, we're still in kind of transition for them to just be taking care of everything. Um, but that's going well. Developments, these are just the ones that we've worked on this year. Yes.
So, when people put in a. A request online from the streetlights. Is it going directly to them or is it still hanging through the city?
Directly to them.
Directly in them, at this point, it, we were having. We had a few hiccups in getting that set up, but it, it's. It's now set up, so it goes directly to them and they're just taking care of it. And from what I've heard over the last couple of months, it's done way better.
Okay.
All the ones I turned in are still out there, that was just my test.
Okay, well. Scratch what I just said. Oh, you know, though, they, there are some part issues with that. So that, I think there are a few things where they're waiting for some.
I mean, it's all the ones I turned in are still. That's been like six months.
Yes. But I think the first several months were, were communication issues, they didn't have the information. And then they have been out. To see what the issues are with those, but they don't have yet, and they're, we're getting to the point where they'll just have on supply. The parts that we're gonna need for our system so that they'll be able to go do those immediately. But they're not at that point yet, and so we're waiting for that kind of initial order, if you will.
So when we get to that point, what's our level of service agreement with them?
And who's monitoring it?
Well, we have, we have a contract with pricing in there, so they, when they get a request, they go take care of it and then they charge according to the. Figure to farm price.
So have we told them many to, uh, you know, completed within three days, a week?
They're typically gonna be out to see it within two to three days.
Okay.
And if, once they have the parts, their intention is to have it repaired in that timeframe. Um, right now, and, and keep in mind, some of our lights are our own lights and that's where we would have that, some of them are Rocky Mountain Power. Um, the process is when you go online and you click on the light, it brings up an email that sends to them and it tends to me, so I can track. Every request that comes in from the citizenry, cause I'm gonna get the email just like they are. Um, and then they'll communicate and say, we got your request and we're gonna come out. A couple of them, they've responded to me and said, that's a Rocky Mountain Power owned light, we've already communicated with Rocky Mountain Power, but we're still beholden to their maintenance. On the Rocky Mountain Power.
Back to the requestor.
They are, they will.
And I think the new mapping, wherever you click on the light, it's really pretty. User-friendly.
Yeah.
I did talk to them just last week actually about managing that expectation of, okay, we're gonna come out and fix it, right? To just say, we got your request is one thing, but to say, we'll be out on site within a certain period of time and look at it and then we'll do repairs from there. We still haven't figured out managing that expectation as well as we want, but. I did communicate with them and they said, we will reply to each email saying, we got it and, and we're gonna be on site to review.
But to try to help this process, we set up a monthly meeting with them. Where we, as we're trying to make sure that we get it to the point where they're just taking care of it, right? And it gets taken care of quickly, that's the goal. So we're, 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 we're working through that with them, I think they. Are gonna be a great group to work with, they seem very responsive, um, and, and so. It feels like we'll get there, but we're not quite there yet. Um, so here's the developments, I, I, all the ones that we worked on this year, of course, you know, a lot of the ones you see. Um, are through the approval process, right, but, but just keep in mind that we're still working with inspections on subdivisions. We also do, uh, before anybody gets a certificate of occupancy. We do a um. Site inspection of the site, right, so the um. Building inspector is doing an inspection of the home and all of that, but they don't always look at the site, so. We're, we do the, the site inspection to make sure that any of the things that were required at the subdivision that they're prepared. Um, before they get occupancy, because once you give them occupancy, it's super hard to come. Come, come back and fix the sidewalk or whatever else. Some of them you saw for final acceptance this year. Okay, so this is um. Yes, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah.
While you're on. Certificate of occupancy and final inspection. Is there a way, have you ever, any other cities do this or would it be worthwhile? Issue that I see when I'm out, you know, as a home builder, we get the final inspection, get the certificate, get the. Found release back to us, homeowner moves in, homeowner puts in his yard, drives the big trucks across this sidewalk, busts the sidewalk within. Six months of moving in, now it's a possibility to replace that sidewalk. Is there any way that we could? Have another bond? It's just with the homeowner?
Well, one way that we've addressed that in, in a different, as a different approach is that our, our city standard for sidewalk is six inch thick. With vitrmesh, with vitrmesh, and I think because we were seeing that all the time. And um. We're not seeing it hardly at all anymore. It's just, uh. It's, yeah, substantial enough by just adding those two inches that it's not breaking. But. Um, I mean, that, it's a good point, but we haven't had as many issues since we went to that.
Is that the case for the concrete replacement, are they gonna have to replace it?
Yeah, we hold ourselves to the same standards.
Even though they're matching a four inch.
Yes. Yes.
Will you go forward one? What's a diehard one? Oh, okay.
So that, as just kind of a side note to that. Um, they will be installing the sidewalk as a part of their development. Yep, they're just splitting the current one into two. But that, that still hasn't been a, a fine commission yet.
No, we've done a sketch plan review with them, but we haven't, they haven't submitted any other applications.
No, we've done a sketch plan review with them, but we haven't, they haven't submitted any other applications.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of detail on here, and you don't really have to pay too close attention to it, but I I wanted to give you an idea of like a three year comparison of. I call it workload, but it's basically our hours. Um and hour meaning everybody who from Jones and Associates who does anything here. We got it broken down by the 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 categories that I listed through the presentation, some miscellaneous waters, sewer. Uh sort of occupancy inspections, we we break those out slightly different. Oh, I didn't want to add, just remember that any of the development stuff. Is that we do is reimbursed to the city by the developer, so. Um so you're paying your free. On that part, yes, um. Anyway, but I think it's interesting to kind of compare through the years, like. How things have changed. Um. Then here is, um. Oh, this is just giving the total, so of the previous ones, so you can see total hours, so. In twenty twenty, we're five thousand, twenty one, thirty eight hundred, and then last year is twenty nine hundred. Uh this one shows kind of the last six years total hours. So you can kind of see that. Our involvement ebbs and flows depending on the needs of the year, a lot of that is sometimes driven by certain capital projects that require more. Time for a general plan.
Categories here. That contribute are two factors, one of them is, I know at least when I got started. We had gone through a period in this city where there were not a lot of projects that were done, and those first few years were, let's get a bunch of projects done. So I think that is, that's evidenced here, but also um. With Trevor getting on board, some of the things that Brandon had to do through the development process were. Were kind of removed off of his plate and Trevor was handling that, and so I think that probably contributes to some of all as well.
Which I very much appreciate. Anyway, um then this is kind of breaking it down by the type. Of of labor, so meetings, design and and construction management, mapping studies and review. Um let's just showing like the percentages of time, how that would break out. Um. I think that, you know, graphs are interesting. Uh this is the same one with the total received, total hours.
Are you agreeing?
No. No, I am blue. But I have a green street now and then. And that's on.
So you have one uh big line for miscellaneous. Um it was your largest back on uh. What is miscellaneous items?
Um so it would be like the uh fire station, for example, would be would fall under miscellaneous. It's not specifically water, sewer, storm rain, streets. Um. Uh meetings, um. Sometimes even in miscellaneous, if it involves like. Oh, if there was a project that had multiple elements to it, like where there's water, sewer and storm rain, let's say. Um then sometimes the project itself. Would get put under miscellaneous because it would. Go to one specific one, and then as far as how they pay for it, uh they would break that out separately, but how it. This just coincides with how we bill.
And so does it break it down anywhere between uh what the developers reimburse us for and then what is city responsibility budget wise?
That's the development one, the orange.
Okay.
So that's, that's a totally separate invoice.
Okay, so only the things that are in the orange, or the stuff that's prepaid or paid through development.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So. You could see like last year, there were five hundred and forty hours. To development out of the twenty nine hundred. I know the numbers are small there.
No. But it does look like the miscellaneous hours, although the percentages are different, they're about the same range, eight forty to seven eighty one.
Yeah. Well, that's also granularity of the. And you'd have to. I mean, you, I I could show you some of the other things, I'm not thinking of any other really good examples, but um. Just anything that doesn't go specifically to water. For streets or something ends up under miscellaneous. Any other questions?
I got one.
Yeah.
For you or Mark or both of you. What is the uh? Oldest water line we have? In use in the city? And where is it located?
It's a trivia question, and he knows the answer.
I don't know, you know.
I know.
Curious, no.
Cause I I was like, I don't, I'm not sure.
I really would think.
Yeah.
Then you would start back on behind.
Yes, we pulled out.
It's to be to that main transmission line that ran through town that was lead joint.
It was joined by the WPA, so we're.
It's gone.
Is it gone?
It's gone.
Okay.
Yeah, thankfully, we've been ahead of the EPA on replacing our lead joint lines, so we don't have any main lines. That have led joint. Interestingly enough, on the lead copper rule, they didn't even say about main lines, they're not even addressing that, they just are talking about the service going into the homes.
But you have, we have a lot of that.
I I don't think.
Going to home?
The only lead copper will have inside the home.
Yes, I mean, from the from the meter to the home.
Well, no.
Well, they didn't allow lead after like nineteen eighty three. And so anything that, we're only gonna be looking at homes prior to that point.
Then cake hoppers what they used on the way in, it says that with it. It's just the fixtures inside the house and the solder they used to throw the junk inside the house.
Yeah.
But we really shouldn't have anything in town.
Well, like ninety five five solder wouldn't be counted in that. Yeah, they still use ninety five five solder.
We don't, we don't use any of that. From the house to the meter, inside the house, we don't have to worry about.
It's just to the home.
To the home. And so there's no joints to the. The joints on the street, we're about flare fittings or.
Yeah, so I don't think that there's gonna be a a ton, some of the older houses in town. Uh jams.
Great length of sample, first of all, this is.
It is, I agree.
I mean, we have, we we test for it all the time, we had no problems. But now they want us to spend all this money doing reporting, at first we're like, well, if you don't know what it is, you'll have to dig it up. We're gonna dig up everybody's yard and find out, no. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, to me, if you if you're testing your system and you're just finding trace elements of lead. But they don't exceed the limits. And why does it matter? It's not broken, we'll fix it.
Curtis, the kid, he's a wreck guy. Thank you. That's our. Attendance for the. Program with the rec center. Broken down to each one that comes in, that we have our. Classes that we're offering, I don't have um. Yoga on there because I don't really, she's after. After hours program, I mean, she's got like five people per week. And then she shuts down for the summer because she's a school teacher. But for our conversation about uh morning yoga, I did hit her up about that, she said she would do it during the summer. But you can't during the school. You'll see most of the the numbers, I mean, they're really not changing all that much. Except for this year, we had a a major turnout with the Halloween and the Santa, we had quite a few more people there. Yeah. The clinics are pretty much the same, these, I'm just going back one year. Um those right there, the clinics, basketball, the soccer, that's usually me. That's for the kids that we don't offer practice. Usually for the younger, like pre K and K versus second grade, that's on the coach. And when I talk to the coaches, they're pretty much like, uh, yeah, I'm gonna show up for an hour practicing, have one kid show up. So they kind of get burned out pretty fast on that, so I don't really ask them to do that, that's on their discretion. Everything else, uh the indoor soccer, we just barely started that this year. Uh she had a game last night, if you guys noticed that. At the dinner, they were in there playing. And she's asked if she can uh have. Starting next fall. Run the same thing, but I said I couldn't comment. Or commit because we're gonna try to do indoor uh. Sports with the families. We're gonna do a whole month at a time. With our recreation, um. Committee, we've decided that we're gonna go with the a month at a time, instead of you've noticed on my. Month breakdown. I've tried three different uh sports for the family per month, and I haven't had one person show up, so we've decided to go with. Like one month pickleball, one month volleyball, one month uh. Nine square, gotta do that, and then cornhole, we're gonna throw in there too, and during bad weather.
So I get a message from one of my friends every month, saying family night at the rec center. She sent one about an hour ago, about next Friday night. About done by the rec, that's not about people renting it out.
No, that's. I I booked that for two hours every Friday, so or excuse me, every Saturday, so if they weren't show up.
Just before it happens, I've seen you do like a whole calendar.
I try and get that out at least the a week before they start the month.
It might be really helpful just to fill out the data, because we're. None of us know what the crap we're doing until it's the data. But so, I just thought, hey, in two hours or in four hours or later tonight, this is happening. I I think it would be really helpful, because I didn't even know that they were happening, but I did read like the whole calendar events, and it's like. You know. Yeah. And on the TV too, are you advertising that on the TV?
Not on the TV.
You should, because then if people go to drop their kids off.
We're gonna start doing commercials. So you guys are all welcome to come over and we'll film you for a commercial, write your own commercial.
Right.
We'll have that. Uh I think what I'll do is when it's a month time, I'll post it on um. Either the marquee or have uh Dave or whatever do it on the. The whole cabinet is out there for a whole month.
We can talk more on in our, our meeting.
Okay.
So Curtis, here's a question for you. So it's, we're advertising pickleball. So I was thinking we'd add it on our Facebook page and we'd add it up on the LED sign. We had an increase in. Since we've been advertising that, have you noticed or not?
Uh in the mornings. Just like I say, we haven't had one person show, we've had a few people call, and they wanna bring like two people. And take up half the gym, and I'm like, yeah, I can't do that. If you wanna reserve it for, you know, like two courts or whatever, I can do that, or just to take up a whole half court. And for one uh. Game for one uh court. For like, you know, if you get a family of five or six people and you charge them, you know, three dollars for a family, you take them half the gym. I kind of think, well, you need to reserve that instead of just coming in there. Uh Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's average about uh anywhere from twelve to sixteen people. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we got the regulars.
Has that attendance number grown as we've advertised it?
The Tuesday, Thursday? Uh a couple, I would say it's gone from. Two courts to three to sometimes four. Yeah, I think every time we can advertise, you want to get it more out there.
Curtis, Curtis Shaly and I have talked a lot about uh our coordination efforts and this, we meet weekly to coordinate a lot of these. Day of promotions or week of promotions, because that's. Uh especially with the drop in nights, that's most effective, it's like, hey, we have nothing going on tonight, you wanna go over and. Play this, right?
Which ones did you say, Curtis, that you're adding? Is it, and what's it called, is it for half, what age group or anything?
It's gonna be open for all age groups.
All ages and abilities.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's the pickleball, what, which one?
We'll do pickleball like a month. Uh volleyball. Uh cornhole. And nine square.
Okay.
You need a bartender for a cornball?
Yes.
Be the referee.
Yeah, cause I think pretty much I have served beer to play that game.
Well, yeah, with one hand and then the other, yeah.
It's a control game.
I think we have to create a speed key, Z, that's fine. There's some of the, like we were talking about, there's some of the stuff that we're emphasizing on, um. We're gonna try to go on Thursday nights. I'm gonna try to work that into my schedules. Um for the adults. With the pickleball, that of course I'll be outdoors, but indoors now, of course, volleyball same. Uh the top right is adult softball. We'll try that with the coed, bottom right is cornhole, the bottom left, excuse me, is cherry farms ballfield. From the aerial view, so you can kind of see, I wish I could, you know, look at better this. And thanks Dave for doing that for me. Um. If I can get that done this spring, I've already been asked about comp leagues. And that will, if that's done, that'll take so much heat off. Canyon Meadows, that that's where we'll have to do our adult softball. I've got coaches wanting to volunteer to come in and do clinics, they're college softball players. That have asked to come in and do some clinics and actually even coach, because I think they're trying to feed Northridge softball. And I think that would be great for our city. Um with the comp.
Let me say. Rejutary farms, softball, you're talking about the.
Yeah, the little upgrade that we we talked about.
Removing the sod. Freshter.
Yeah. And.
You go back one slide. I moved through that one pretty fast.
Oh, I thought that was kind of just pretty much the same thing. Oh, no, sorry, my bad. There's your totals, your um revenues. The half gym and full gym and the dance room, of course, are. Kind of go back to that with the the monthly payments. You can see on the revenue, the the karate pays that much for rent, the tumbling that much and high fitness. That's what their monthly rent is. So that's gotta kind of. Tie into the revenue for the, you can see on the half gym, dance room with multipurpose.
When did we open at the higher rate, higher cost?
Oh.
Of everything, didn't we?
For the registrations? Yeah, that's, that's, everything's gone right now. I didn't do it last year because everything was. Um registration right then. So as soon as the boys basketball, that was the first one to get hit with it, but all this next coming year, every sport will have the increase. And it will be on the website that. There is an open date, closed date, and then there will be a extended registration that will give a fee. And that's. Hopefully, that's in red, so hopefully, hopefully, they can see that. But you can see there's a little bit of difference in the participants, a little bit of difference in the costs or the revenue. Parks, I think the parks, uh personally, I think everything with uh Joel and Quinn's input, I think, and David's. With the QR code, I think that's helped out, it's kind of made a little bit more work for us, because we gotta take it off. One thing, and then we still have it on our uh. Spreadsheet work that color coordinated to see who's got it. Um so it's a little bit bigger hassle, but I think it works out better for the public. Um you just go with the park and kind of you take a picture of the goal, and it'll tell you what's available. Uh huh, yeah, it works really good. It takes a little bit of heat, I mean, it kind of. Uh balances out by them being able to do it online and then us having to find it online and then put it into another. So it works out pretty good.
Yeah, before it was just called the update scene, and now it's. Yeah, we got a QR code on the sign in the parks, the pavilions, yeah.
We're just show up and argue with the person that's running it.
The city website, well.
No, it's out, have the different facilities, there's a sign.
Well, my husband would say, so you have to drive to the facility to get the QR, like.
On the website to.
The QR who just sends you to the city website where there's the registration.
The QR who just sends you to the city website where there's the registration.
From which website?
Or you could make your husband wait for a minute, right?
I think that's. Does anybody have any questions?
We're ready for this one?
Did you put the funger in here?
This is the admin.
That was funny.
Welcome to S W C, you're earlier. Tonight, we're gonna take a deep dive into the administration department.
More than a fifth of it. You need stories. Well, I can tell you about we have two hundred and thirty-two new signs. Number of bills for twenty twenty-two, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-seven, that's correct, that can be better, almost thirty thousand, I'll have you know. The biggest thing that we're putting on the side of town. Services bill, do you see that number? Four million three hundred sixty-seven, one hundred. And that's on the side of town. Whoa, that's not the all. No, that's not all, here are new B's. B's over two thousand five hundred and twenty-six bills every single month, that's right, every line read, every number, to make sure that they get them correct. For a total of.
One million seven hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars of sales tax, but not only that, we moved to real time. Wow, you're one of the few cities in the state that does that. One million one hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars in property tax. That's amazing. And what are you excited for for twenty twenty-three? Twelve dollar, I'm baby, we're gonna look forward to the collections agency to start collecting all utility bills. That sounds amazing, thank you. We're gonna take a quick break and then we'll be back with a smooth interview. You're not gonna wanna miss this.
Aloha, how can I help you today? Where I can offer you front desk and receptionist services, where we provide candy to anyone who comes in. We make sure it's be festive, so you know what holiday month you're celebrating. When you employ, we provide special services of food, so that you never get angry. Would you like to call beverage? I have them stocked in the fridge. And don't worry if your package counts, I will sign for it and make sure it gets to you on time. And most importantly, our services include answering the phone. Do not worry, I know every extension and get them to you as soon possible. Make sure to check your voicemail. If you would like these services, please call one eight hundred, we'll work for food.
Seventy-four. Citations filed one thousand one hundred twenty-two. Active warrants, two thousand two hundred seventy-two. Is there anything you'd like to say to the people of Adamant? My court is the greatest of the land. Well, I'm sure you'll see sound the night out there and most of those.
And then as the green king leader, we do have a correction. A number of gallon bills.
Not three hundred and fifty-two.
Yeah. Now, I did, if you did notice and you brought it up, I only had a cameo. Because the producer director felt that I probably insert a spreadsheet. Going with the colors being green and blue when they first said. I, when I announced that we were gonna do this, the response was, can we have somebody else do it? We got so much to say and one and you know. And you don't speak fast enough, but then I turned it over to them and they did a fantastic job. Some of the things we have coming forward in twenty twenty-three. Uh, one of them, of course, is the bonding, finding financing for the new public works facility. That's gonna be a major project. Uh, we've done a lot of work, we, in twenty twenty-two. The budget document that we prepared, we, I think, uh, with the help of those who were here and Spencer Kyle, who was here shortly behind. Made a major improvement to our budget document. We want to take that in this next year to our comprehend. To our financial statements at the end of the year and make them similar to our budget document and actually all the comprehensive annual financial report. Uh, I T. Security is a major concern, something we're still gonna look at heavily this year because. Probably heard that there's been at least three cities that I'm aware of that have had. Uh, million dollar threats and some of the actually lost some of that money or a million dollars. We get hit continually every day with uh. With attempts to break into our system or to. Uh, pause staff to fraudulently answer emails and so forth. It's amazing the number that. We do get the attempts on the system. We're not immune to that. One of the big projects that affect my department as much as any department is gonna be the city hall remodel. Uh, I think the staff will be glad when they finally have permanent seat uh seats and place to work. Uh, we're in here with issues to be a major part of my department, so that's one of those things. Going back to the I T. Security, we are gonna look at some more at moving our server and our. And the network to the cloud, there's three reasons for that. First is the increased level of security on the system. Second is redundancy and third in an emergency situation, not many continuity services. After the city hall remodel, and I think the biggest thing for me personally, my goal this year is no turnover of staff.
Yeah.
The rest of my career is the last.
Just on a short note, I'll be losing all three of my staff this graduation. So I'll be redoing all my front desk people, except for the two ladies that I have that are stepping on the hall. Sorry about that.
Okay, any questions? Sit over here.
You jacket on, that's what I'm. Yeah.
I went out and got my blanket.
Sorry, I interrupt.
So mine's a lot more boring. So I apologize, although I will spice it up a little bit. Uh, Haley, what was the last one you listened to?
Uh, I forgot that you existed.
Okay.
Was that a song?
Okay, so. See if I can get through it in two minutes and forty-nine seconds. There we go, that would've been even better. Okay, I have, um, it is a little small, so if you want to see it, I I have these. Uh, done, I'll do it really quick.
Are you gonna play it? It is about Kanye West, just a second.
It's the details after. Alrighty, so uh reviewing this last year, uh there's quite a bit that we um. We accomplished in community services, but one thing that um. I noted is that there's a year of transition further. Uh, we had a lot of of movement within the organization uh that affected our department. Uh, the first one was that I came on the year prior to this. And then uh C A D moved over in April, um, and so we had some communications at that point. Then we lost our co- enforcement officer in July, so we had more in transition and so that, um, as you start reviewing your year, you realize how much. Uh, turnover affect everything you've done. But we talked a lot about the other things that we've done on the other ones, so you can, you know, do those. Here's a little quick snap of uh our communications. For this last year, we got two hundred twenty new likes on our page, our average is seven forty, um. We're sitting around close to two thousand people that follow up, so that's a lower percentage on our reach, so we wanna build that up this next year. Average engagement is twenty-two and that's a really kind of lower number on engagements, so we're gonna bring that up a lot as well. Um, but we did hit our goal, we had a goal of that fucking three times a week, uh, and so. That fifteen posts per month average, uh, so we hit that, um. Our email, our emails do really well, uh, that's the moral of that story. They they have good open rates, good interactivity and and we really agree. There's some quick uh human research numbers, I don't look through all of them, but one, uh, we did have twenty per nation that's. That's either firings or quits or anything like that, um, so that affects our turnover, which our turnover rate for the organization is twenty-five point three percent. Uh, ideally, we want us to around ten percent to be a healthy organization, so we're a little bit high, um. We, the the most turnover was in the fire department and that's kind of the indicative, just that the parts in nature and they kind of turn those that way. Um, but uh we have the highest percentage in that industry to be fair. Let's see, uh, our average drop tenure is four point two, which is on track for the private sector, for both public sector, it's averages about six points. That six point eight, and so we have a pretty low, low tenure on that. Building and code, um, we had a big transition in code of the new ordinance and then the changes there, so. Um, but our building permits are tracking down, uh, it's just indicative of the their timeframe and the the market. So here's a little look forward, it was so close. Oh, look, it's going again. Okay, so looking forward, we have kind of a packed year. One of the biggest things that we wanna tackle was the updating our emergency operations plan. We're gonna go through section by section, um, do some edits and then run that through the um, emergency and the. Public safety committee as we we go through that, so that's gonna be a big, big project this year, um. Uh, we're gonna start working on some of our moderate income housing elements, uh, including the the access. In external accessory units, that's gonna be something coming forward in the beginning of the year. Working on parking enforcement, um. And then a big push in the community, community relations is gonna be our city events. One thing that we really want to strive to do. It's created an environment for the residents, but I think um. A good, a good event gives the council the opportunity to mix and mingle with them. Uh, the residents as well, so you have a lot of, a lot more face time with them. Uh, kind of a low stakes environment, which makes them feel more comfortable to talk to you about different things that are going on, so. Uh, look for those, we're gonna be planning those with uh the public relations committee here soon. Um, and then uh we're, we're gonna be, there's some pretty, pretty big items like the public works facility. Our uh, we know that we're doing a treat the taxation because of um the county. And so uh we will be, you know, that we have to hit that uh on communications pretty well. Um, as well, it's an election year, so we've got voting that's coming up and um. And then we're gonna start, um, hopefully transitioning the the office, getting, getting that, we'll communicate that out and. At the end of the year, that's the the uh transition from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, we're gonna start beginning to gather. All the necessary general plan materials and look at what scope we wanna do that. And a little bit that go forward, so. That's what I've got for you guys.
So mine's gonna include twenty twenty-two year in review along with some stuff with it from last year. It's kind of what we do, we do this kind of stuff. I'm not gonna read that, we can read. Uh, we are all at our department, if there are anything someone's gonna call nine one one for, we're there. Um, beverage, random staffing, four hour shift. One more seven three six five. Now, we now have her medical coverage as of October of twenty twenty-one. Call volume, ran four hundred calls in twenty twenty-two, that's actually down. By fifty-six from the year prior, most of it because of COVID. Uh, thirty-seven one medicals, hundred and fifteen transport, thirteen, thirteen red fires, and hundred and twenty-nine running outs.
Do you work within our city?
Yeah.
Bridge fires outside of our city?
Those are, there could, those could include something like a canyon where it's kind of. Depending on what part of the canyon, it's either Weaver Davis County, so we both go, um. And then this, we had two working house fires, we received assistance from Riverdale. Uh, their chief and their truck, Lake, they also said it to Ben and Ninja, and actually, and this gentleman put it on there. And we were fired, those are our automatic aid partners for this area and we actually, I don't think they included it. But uh, obviously we don't help them too if they call for help. Um, we're. As far as the increases, just for some perspective, I can't remember if I left the slide in here or not. Like from twenty seventeen was the first year we we passed two hundred calls. So in the last five years, we've more than doubled our call volume. Pretty wild, and and one thing to consider with that too is, that's what that's stopping the rehab. Cause rehab used to be a huge chunk of our call volume, but we stopped doing rehab two years ago and our call volume, it didn't. Our call volume still kept going up, so if we were still doing that, it'd be even significantly higher than this. Um, our responses to the care center are actually went down, I think a lot of that's just because of COVID. And uh. We also have frequent flyer person that no longer is there, so that also helped with that. Um, increased population, COVID. Uh, oh, so I guess I did leave that slide in here, there you go, that's some stuff I already talked about. Um, we were the first part department to go to medic service since Lake and South Davis did it in early two thousands.
Um, we were the first fire department to go to medic service since Lake and South Davis did it in early two thousands, now we're all there. But there you go, two hundred and seventy-two percent increase since twenty thirteen, so in a decade, our call volume's gone up almost three hundred percent. This winter, while line wise has been crazy, I'm sure you've all seen the news. Um, lucky, luckily for them, bad for us from a financial standpoint, is California's been in the deluge zone for water. So there's not been a single EMAC order this winter, which compared to the last five winters, it's pretty crazy where it was one constant EMAC order in basically November to March.
There, what does EMAC?
Emergency Management.
Action Committee.
Something, yeah, I I don't know that, I'm not a fan. Basically, an EMAC order is when a governor from a certain state calls the governor of a different state and says, hey, can you send its resources? Basically, how that boils down. And even for us here, it was super slow, like, usually during the wild man season, we go and help local jurisdictions. Um, and I actually included some slides from twenty twenty-one. But this last year, we didn't get called out a single time, so it's, which obviously is good, because we're not getting fired, but it meant we didn't bring any extra revenue like we have in the past. COVID nineteen, I think it's important to cover that since, again, we didn't go over it last year, we never ran out of PPE. Unlike some places, we had seventeen employees in COVID. We responded to many confirmed cases and many more potential COVID, but in half the case, COVID was not really called. And we experienced zero interruptions in service during COVID. Um, I mean, we're a one station department anyways, but there were cities that were rounding out stations. For like, Lake's got four stations, they're like, oh, we don't have enough staffing for three today, so the other three stations are gonna have to help cover the area before. That's kind of what they brown out coverages, we never had to do that. Started paramedic service in the last two years, F thirty-five crash. Um, one thing I was thinking about is I was just going through what I wanted to say about this, it's um, I think everybody knows how lucky we got that it didn't get the site facility or the neighborhood or anything else. Um, but what's also crazy from a time of year standpoint, it couldn't happen at a better time of the year. Because the temperatures were already cooling down, we'd already started to receive some winter weather. But had it happened during the summer, that fire would have spread way quicker, would have been way harder to manage. And if it happened during the winter, then we would have been dealing with access issues to get up there and actually cover the pilot and suppress the fire. So I know this was kind of a big thing, anyone have any questions on this slide, if they're lower on this one? We kind of, it's kind of crazy, the different hazards, I mean, we're a relatively small community, but the potential for major incidences like this, it's pretty astronomical, you count the freeways, air force base, winds, earthquakes, mudslides, you know, all that stuff impacts us.
My.
House fires, I included this fire on the left, many of you probably remember this fire, this fire happened long before I was, not long, but before we had made all the changes we've made at the fire station. Um, I included it because before we were staffed as a department, you had basically a fifty fifty chance if your house caught on fire, it's gonna burn. Since we've started staffing, we've had zero houses burned there. So. So that's kind of cool, that we've been able to save every house so far that we've got a house fire in versus what happened here on the left. And who knows, you know, not the Monday morning quarterback or just that period of time, but maybe we're gonna save that house anyways, but it's just we haven't lost a house since. This, for those that don't remember, we used to, our old Quint ladder truck was an old nineteen seventy-four American Le Bron. Was that actually did not meet virtually every safety standard for Quince. Um, the only reason we were even able to operate it was because of this ground weathered in, but, uh, yeah, not ideal, really, we only used for raisin flags because it wasn't reliable at all, so. Um, on the right, that's what a Quint's supposed to look like, and just an option, you know? The reason, we'll get to why I'm bringing this up, but here's what a Quint does, it does a lot of things that an engine doesn't do, and we're gonna talk about this more depth later, but, um. We currently don't have. We might hurt you through all those, but.
But we have a Quinn, and that's. Yeah.
One piece shy of the point. We'll need you to come down so we can find your back. Anyways, we'll talk more. There's some other interesting things, the premium bucket bowl, I guess that was actually in twenty twenty-one, but um, I'll add through this slide in there for a couple reasons, one, Farmington was super nice, they let us use their RTF gear. Um, RTF gear is expensive, but, uh, that is a purchase we're gonna have to make.
What is that, riot tactical, son? Return the fire? I was gonna say, thank you. That's our, yeah.
It's a rescue tactical.
She, you need to get up on your.
You gotta know what they are.
Yeah. Rescue tactical.
Somebody Google.
What do you, what do you use? That's a better answer. So RTF gear is used, um.
You can play with that at the fire station.
No, like, not, for us, it's not something we're gonna have to worry about unless someone, worst case scenario, someone's shooting up one of the schools, someone's shooting up Sacramento meeting, and RTF means that it, well, rescue pack, of course. Yes, thank you, um, there's been this shift because of Columbine and because of the Orlando nightclub shooting. Um, Columbine started it, and then the Orlando nightclub shooting really kind of made it more obvious why it's necessary, I'm gonna tell a quick story, I don't know, you guys probably don't care, but, um. In the Orlando nightclub shooting, almost every victim that died bled to death and could have been saved had crews gone in and applied current kits and whatnot. Las Vegas, before they had their shooting, actually sent a team to Orlando to study what went wrong at the Orlando shooting. And nationwide, we all decided, we're going in with the cops, period of the story. Cops are gonna focus on neutralizing the threat, but we are gonna go in with the safe, stable people, not the risk of ruining the day. Um, but because of that, they gave us ballistic, they're pretty good at this, everyone's very purchasing ballistic comic, ballistic vest. So when the Las Vegas shooting happened, all those people that died, only one of them died of an ext, ext, uh, extremity wound. Only one, everybody else was either chest or headshot, and so that, that helped support the idea that, no, we're not waiting, we're going in with the cops. Anyways, so there, that's how we got to this point, where now every fire department's covering, carrying ballistic gear because the expectation for me and my guys is we're going in with the cops. Sorry, that was a real long answer, but I think it's good to paint the picture of how we got to this point. Anyways, so we had it there just in case something happens. Um, and some of the chit chat we're getting from law enforcement and stuff, there might be people looking to cause problems. Well, I hit up Farmington and borrowed some of their extra stuff, so thanks to them, you're letting us even do that. Um, like I said, neither from twenty twenty-one, because we didn't have any of these in twenty twenty-two. Um, this is a East Canyon, we actually laid like thirteen hundred feet of progressive lay on this fire, which is pretty ridiculous. Um, and then our north wire, this was the one that was up by Snow Basin. We also laid a ton of line into this one as well, and protected these homes right here. Luckily, this home you can see here had pretty good defensive space, but our guys also got a really good stop right here, and so that's what that picture shows, is us getting a stop around that house. Um, we dedicated the station, that was also twenty twenty-one, those that don't know, when Bloom surfaced the volunteer fire, he did like thirty something years. We thought it was, Eddie was the one that was instrumenting in the building, but so we thought it'd be a nice thing to do to honor him. Uh, as far as future goes, the fire service in general, uh, needs to solve staffing issues, um. So I, every, every week, a couple times a week, I meet with, uh, fire ser, fire service leaders from around the country, this is not in Utah. This is nationwide, um, we're getting less applicants than positions available across the board. And it's leading, like I mentioned, brownouts earlier. It's leading the cities brownout stations and areas because, well, the station's blacked out, but there is brownout. Anyways, part of the reason, and I don't know how this can be fixed, again, I get this is broad, but obviously it boils down and affects us as well, is hospitals and all these private companies are like, hey, we're gonna hire paramedics and EMTs and advanced EMTs, and hospitals hire us so we can do IVs and bub leads and stuff nurses don't wanna do. And warehouses hire us so we can, you know, be onsite medical, Amazon warehouses. The gist is, there's a huge shift of people trying, training EMS personnel out of the fire EMS world. And it's a major problem when a hospital can come off at forty dollars an hour, and a municipal city's only offering twenty dollars an hour. Like, we, I don't know, any city that's keeping up with what the hospitals are paying EMS personnel right now, and I don't know, it's not like you can go in and tell them that they, they're not allowed to hire those people, but it's causing a major problem. Uh, these three things have been planned for, for a long time, it's in any of the ten year capital project list that I've been doing since I became chief, it's been included. Uh, station remodel. We've been kind of fixing the station, but the big thing we need to do with this remodel is our kitchens falling apart, our cabinets falling apart, our countertops all piled up. So that's what that's for, that's fiscal year twenty-six, air compressor, fiscal year twenty-nine. And then Quint, so the Quint was originally planned for fiscal year twenty-eight. Well, it's still planned for fiscal year twenty, the reason you're hearing me talk about it now, instead of a couple years from now, this current bill times on Quince are three to four years. So that puts us, come July, that puts us in that four year window, so we're trying to pump there, any questions?
How's the, uh, the Larry building going?
Um, it needs heat, and there's a few other things they need to do, drive all the interior, but I think we're almost there.
ETA on that?
The, I think the heat is the the heat's going in Wednesday, okay, and then once the heat's in, they're gonna start doing the drywall. We're ready to have a final watch through with rubber. That's what we're at.
So occupancy?
As soon as the heat goes in and the drywall. I, I mean, I can, our meat was out there this night, I mean, drywall, there's drywally part, I mean, that, that, all the side work's gonna stop. Now. A month, two months.
Yeah.
That's the timeframe.
I'm assuming you're painting it too, you're not, are you painting it or not?
I don't know.
Inside?
Yeah, inside.
No, the, the, well, no, no, you're, you're, yeah, sheetrock on the north wall, because it's firewall, so it's actually got sheetrock on both sides. Um, they're not, I need to paint that, and the, uh, the rest is just insulation with kind of the white covering.
Okay, have you had many applicants on the engine bus? That was cool.
No, and part of the problem, um, is, like I mentioned, there's no EMAC orders. So no one's actually looking, because no one's going out on fires, if there were EMAC orders happening, those guys that normally are just seasonal during the the summer would be looking for EMAC orders to take, well, there's no EMAC orders, no one's even looking. So unfortunately, the weather, fortunately, because we all need, we all know we need the moisture, but they're really from the fire, by nine to ten point is worst case scenario right now. So there's kind of firestorm. And quick thought about that, because, you know, when we painted that window of what's worst case scenario versus best case scenario, um, in terms of the potential number of weeks that somebody would be out. Um, we put in there, I think it was three weeks, as far as being out, and so really, we created a major buffer for ourselves of if we only had people go out this next fire season, um, that would still be within the parameters we set, and so that that's what we're looking at, we've of course been advertising since when, well, we had to wait for the, we had to wait for the vehicles to come in, which they didn't come in until August.
There's a huge.
That was a super threatening issue, um, once the vehicles came in, we've been advertising straight, we've been adjusting our advertising to try to make it more attractive at times. Um, so we think that the weather is a factor, we.
Yeah, by the time we got our brush trucks in August, every available engine bus was already out on fire, right? And so we were kind of doomed from the beginning with our brush, brush trucks showing up almost a year after they were scheduled to be delivered. So you start advertising for positions in August, well, everyone's out on fires already, and then, so we started advertising, trying to get someone, so if EMAC opportunities popped up, we're getting some EMACS. But with no EMACS, there's no, nowhere to send anyone. So as far as window goes, if, if May and June start out strong, still in this budget fiscal year, and we have guys out on those fires during those periods, there's still, in this fiscal year, the potential for revenue. But, you know, as I've said from the beginning, mother nature is not predictable, so I can't say guaranteed every year, we're gonna get X amount of dollars because we have monsoon weather and it totally kills that. Doesn't mean three years from now, we won't be out, eight months out of the year, nine months out of years, ebbs and flows. I wish it was more easy, more easily predicted, but it's just not.
So our plan is to hit the, hit the advertisement hard again here, you know, these next couple of months leading up to that window of time, when, when we anticipate wildfire season again, right? So that we can, uh, be ready to roll as soon as there are orbits.
And there's a potential with all the moisture.
Yeah, we turned it back down. Getting a little warm. I'm sure the men are very hot.
Yeah, the moisture, if we're hot all the time, we're gonna have huge growth in the spring, and December dries out.
So I have a question though, ambulance, what's our revenue on our ambulance?
I think last calendar year, we were having sixty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna have that conversation.
Sixty couple thousand, are we breaking?
So.
I'm gonna take that as a loophole money.
What do you mean by losing money? We're saving money.
No loss.
No, I'm saying, there was never an earmount set aside, right? Just like, oh, this is our point, this is our breaking point. But we did figure it out why our number has been lower than Latens, and if you want me to get into that, I mean, I can, but I think we had talked about saving it for public safety committee. This is a really interesting position, so at least give, yeah.
Okay, so I started brief, yes, I'll be super brief, I love it, brief as I can. So I started looking into why there's discrepancy in revenue, right? If, here, this is state law, and I actually called the state and argued with them about this. You are allowed to bill up to your agency's license level, right? So what was happening is people were getting billed up to the agency's license level, which was paramedic level. Well, we haven't been doing that, personally, I think it's unethical. So if I only sent two EMTs on an ambulance, I, why should you as a citizen get billed for paramedic service? And so that's how we've been operating. Talking to the state, almost everybody else, there's other people like me that don't do this, but almost without exception everywhere else, if you're a licensed department at the paramedic level, whether you had a paramedic on that ambulance or not, you're billing those citizens for paramedic level service. You, there might not have even been paramedic on the call, but because that agency is licensed paramedic level, they're billing paramedic services, and that's, that's fairly significant, it's very, that's, that's where our shortcoming is. Right, so if the council wants to tell me, we're billing everybody for paramedic service, you're gonna have to tell me to do it. That's the short story.
You're gonna, I'll get online and look at the billing rates and that's public information for this.
Yeah. I wasn't prepared for this conversation, I would have those numbers, but, but just so you're aware, like, that's in fact, everyone that uses Gold Cross billing, Gold Cross specifically only bills paramedic service if you're a paramedic agency, regardless of the level of service you receive. So it's this giant ethical question of
and there's two sides to the ethical question, so I think that's a very good, it'll be a long discussion, it'll be a good discussion in public safety committee. Right, I think it starts there.
Yeah.
Bringing up now, so we can chew on it.
But yeah, I think we're around seventy thousand. Start to pull up and start talking, I need your exact number.
Well, just one thing, I hate to keep beating this drum, with that new facility that we've got down there, that we're building, that new concrete, we've really gotta be careful this winter on making sure we keep the ice off of that, we don't drive on that when there's snow. And then there's no ice or melt you can put on that.
Okay.
We just, you know, mark. So we're gonna have to kind of watch that too, get in there and plow that as quickly as possible. Cause if we get driving that frost down through that new concrete, it's gonna pop that, we're gonna lose it first winter. Too bad we're having this type of weather. The worst weather you can have for driving concrete. So we just really gotta watch.
Be part of the north side.
I've been watching it, that's what I said, and being that's true. But we really do, cause the worst thing we want is to have a brand new concrete come spring to start flaking them apart.
My guys about to take.
No salt, no ice melt.
Very well. I, I will say, I think that the, the guys that, that did the concrete finished it well, sometimes, you know, they try to make it look good, they cream the top and. Yeah, and I think, um, I don't think that's the case on this, so.
Well, that's the year interview, any other comments or questions?
Very good.
Good reports. Okay, you wanna take a break or anything, or move on?
Lunch should be delivered between eleven forty-five and noon.
Hey, let's go. Let's tackle the big one, the next one, budget priority directive, baby.
Okay, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll kick this one off. So, uh, mayor asked that we provide kind of a, a, a quick overview of city finances, kind of our financial position, um, where we stand, so. Um, I'm sure we could take as much or little time as you want in this, I'm happy to answer questions. Most of, uh, the first couple of slides, I should be review, but just to kind of, again, paint the picture, share pool of meeting that we can start from as far as, city finances before we get into the individual list of projects that we wanna talk about. Um, reminder that our total budget is broken up into two major categories, governmental services and then business services, otherwise known as enterprises or enterprise fund. Within the governmental services, we have the general fund, capital projects fund, and then special revenue funds. Um, all of the information I'm going to share, as far as the financial reports and data are either in, the audit report or in the budget document, so this is all information that's already out there. I'm just putting it into the slideshow so you can see it, but thi- this is all published information. Uh, we have three major funds, right, governmental funds, general capital, and the recreation special revenue. And then we have five that are considered non-major special revenue funds under that governmental services category. The, the four impact fee funds, right, road impact fee, public safety impact fee, rec impact fee, park impact fee. And then the transportation utility fund, which, um, a portion of the revenue for that fund is the transportation utility fee. We also have some classy road money and stuff that we put into that fund for, for distribution, but, um, those are the five non-major. Um, you're familiar with our four major enterprise funds, we also have the vehicle lease internal service fund that was established for the, for the fleet maintenance. Here's our overall financial position as of June thirtieth, right, the, the audit report. Our net position is forty-three million dollars, which means our assets are over our liabilities to the tune of forty-three million dollars. That's our, that's our net position, right? Um, of that, it's broken up almost fifty-fifty, twenty-one million of that is in the governmental services. And, uh, twenty-one million of that, almost twenty-two is in the business services, in the enterprise. That, um, net position increase, this last year, it went up two million dollars or approximately five percent. So we're improving our net financial position. Of that net position, um, the unrestricted net position, um, money that's available to pay off, you know, liabilities or, or other necessities. We have about ten million dollars, of which governmental is two point six and, and the business is seven point nine. We have approximately fifty point four million dollars in assets. Um, then look down at the bottom, of which, almost three quarters of that is in, is in capital assets, right, our, our land, our buildings, our infrastructure. Um, that's where majority of our assets are rich, which is not a surprise. Uh, we have approximately five point eight million in our liabilities. So that's how you get from the fifty million in assets, about five point eight liabilities down into that forty-three million of our net position. Uh, this is overall budget, right, overall finances, so it includes governmental and, and the enterprise, right? This is just percentage breakdown, so you can see it, I'm not gonna walk through all of it, but you can see the, um, the revenues on the left, the expenditure percentages on the right. Again, because this is both governmental and business, you can see that fifty percent of the, all the money we get is charges for service, right? That's utility fees, that's court fees, that's building permit fees, impact fees, all of those kinds of things are in the charges for service. Um, sales tax is not quite, twenty percent property tax is just over ten percent. On the expenditure side, the highway, public works, water utility, um, are our two highest public safety is coming in third there. And then it's kind of broken out, through a lot of different things that we spend money on. Our fund balances, I think this is a, this is the number that councils typically ask about or wanna know about. This is the money that is in the bank, essentially, right, this is, they do the fund balances. It doesn't mean that's the money that we go spend, right, it means that's the money that we have for rainy day or, or for future planned expenses or whatnot. Um, just over four million dollars in fund balances, you can see how that's broken down through the, through the different ones. Um, the unassigned fund balance is essentially the, the money that, that, is in the bank, you've got, um, a bigger number there, but, for example, classy road money, that's restricted, that's, designed for something specific, so the unassigned is, is the money that's generally available in the general fund, which, um, if you remember the state law change, to get up to thirty-five percent at the max, we're currently at twenty-seven percent of our general fund revenues that is in, in the bank there.
I'd say sorry, real quick, so, and from the year before, Matt, were we at twenty-two percent of?
My goal was, was thirty-four, with all the adjustments, we ended up making it year end, I didn't hit that goal.
That's really good though. Off topic somewhat question, I don't know, I wasn't able to make it, you see, that that gravel pit bill. They, there was a provision in there that talks about, um, maybe going to the self-tax on that whole pit, only for class B funding, and not for our protection, obviously. Would that then lower the classy funds that we currently get, and change girl with the gravel pit?
No, no, what that bill is saying is above and beyond what we're getting in classy.
But it will still be just for classy.
But it, but it would be for roads specifically, yeah.
And so like, so our recreation bill that we have set up.
That's all separate from what they're talking about.
But it will change what we're currently getting for classy.
Right, right. Uh, so those are the governmental fund balances, any other questions about, about those? You'll notice the tough money, that is basically what we get every year, right? Cause we're putting, we're using the tough fee every year for road money, so that's not building up. Um, recreation is, is building up a little bit, our capital projects. Um, for the list of capital projects we have in our governmental funds, that's a drop in the bucket, right, and I think we all know that. Um, and then in the non-major ones, there's, there's a little bit of money there.
So is our rec, um, excuse me, our parks impact fee, that's repaying the money that we borrowed from our funds?
Right.
To pay that, that's, that is being allocated back towards your goal, correct?
If we had any park impact fees, then yes, we will be repaying the help with the capital project, as, as we planned that we did that.
Just wanted to make sure.
And the others, yeah, you know, but we've used all of our park impact fees, so there's not any to replenish at this point.
And our building permits have been way down.
And, that's where impact fees are kind of frustrating, right, it's not some automatic revenue stream, it, it comes and goes with the economy and the building, so.
Is the building taking a knock up, or is it still?
No, we don't have that much inventory.
Yeah.
We don't, our entitled units is, is fairly low, and most of it's taken out by the gateway.
We have, this is kind of busy season for development proposals, right, as they try to gear up for construction season, so, you know, as Trevor and, and Brandon kind of highlighted, there are a few in the hopper. But they haven't been approved yet, so we'll see what that means for overall development as well.
Two out of the three that we're actively working on are commercial and the ones.
I mean, Harvest Park is pretty much built out, that was the most recent one. There's just not that much.
Yeah, from a residential side, we're not, we're not seeing those applications right now.
But that's, most other cities are experiencing the same, obviously we fill it more because our, our available land is less, but it's, pretty, it tracks pretty well on your worlds. Barely just stops.
Yeah, quite, quite a bit. What does non-major?
The non-major funds, um, are the, the impact fee ones. It's these ones right here.
Okay.
Yeah, they're divided according to their budget, the rent rate. But you're on big revenue, the big budget, uh, by dollar and out, and they're all, um, a lot smaller. And I mean, the revenue is a pretty good, that means they're in the budget so much, right? You can't list everyone who reported the shooting out of this, so. My supplier, your major, forty-two million dollars.
Okay, let's jump over to enterprise fund balances. Um, we have about twice as much, um, in fund balances there for our enterprise funds. You can see how that's broken down, mostly water and sewer, and then, um, a little bit in the, in the other three. Questions on that side? Okay, let's talk about our, our bonds, let's talk about our debt scenario. Um, in the governmental bonds, we only have one, we have a sales tax revenue bond, whenever it says series twenty-twelve, that's just indicating the year that it was put in place. Um, and that's the ending balance.
Is that for the water tower? What was that for?
Water station.
That's the fire at AC.
Oh, okay.
So you can see how, you know, we're paying it down each year, right, and, and how much is due within the year, where our bond payments are approximately, yeah, ninety-three thousand dollars within the next year, so. Uh, the capital lease program shows up as, as liability here. Um, and so that's why the one point three total is different, but as far as what has been actually bonded, that's, that's the bond now. And then for our enterprise funds, we have, uh, we have two, the water revenue that we refunded in twenty-seventeen. And we're out.
Decide to die, it's like, I did not want to do this job anyway.
It is money, kind of boring.
Yeah, that's your one. Yeah.
Wow, oh, there you go.
They need to add some TV.
I, I'm not gonna touch it.
Wow.
Oh, it really is sad. Oh, it keeps flickering off. Just let it rest for a minute.
This is actually the old one from the city hall.
Well, we go Best Buy. You can go to the city shop or something.
We brought it up in the basement, so we could have.
Give a microwave fireplace going during the holiday season.
Well, the number is two point three million for the, uh, for the water revenue bond.
It's great.
Let's get it up there, and then we have a bond premium, which is the same series, um, which is. Now we're gonna see.
Now you're getting to see that.
Got it?
Okay.
Don't touch it. So the total, uh, total amount, two point six million remaining on that bond. You can see that the payment is similar, right, right, in that same hundred thousand dollar range, there's the other one.
And those are set, you can't pay more than, and much sooner if we have.
I think you could, right, are these callable bonds or not?
No, no, so there is, uh, we went through that when we refinanced and what we wanted to do and so forth, and, um, there are some of, it depends on the next few years, there is a penalty if you do it those. But I think we've got, you know, we could pay it down, but the first like, usually the first five years. Um, these are, the bonds and most of these kind of bonds are a little different than what house mortgages and stuff like that. And so if you, those who invest on municipal bonds, expect the money to come in during that time and they plan on penalties if you pay early.
Well, if you pay the extra principal, they don't even know what to do with the money when they're collecting it, just how do they distribute it up to the baseline or same basis? They don't know how to pay down that principal, when you send that money.
Yeah, and, uh, with cheap policy, always keep on from this one. And different people get, actually, the bonds are divided out, and different people may get paid, have their lot, their amount, your money with late bond and bonds, depending with different leaders. So not everybody's like, I just, this, I don't. And the other thing is, yeah, when we look at our capital projects, it's our capital projects, we're not for a lot more than what we have. So it's not, we have any money, just, unite if you could, if you have the money, but the first thing is, is there is item proceeding, you might need to have, really address that problem. That option.
Questions about the bonding and the debt scenario? We're gonna kind of shift topics a little bit. The council asked previously for staff to get into the build-out projection, so now we're gonna kind of shift into the future production, projections. Um, as we reported in council a month or so ago, um, we feel pretty good about it, um, but we also feel terrible about it at the same time, because, uh, we're lucky that, kind of the, just the general fund amount, not the capital projects amount. So, um, we ran different scenarios, this is where that Aon software came into play and was able to run these different scenarios for us, which was really cool. So, um, quick orientation without touching the screen.
Don't you have a pointer on that thing?
I don't think they work very well with those dealers. Works on the wall, but. Look at this, so we ran, we ran five different scenarios. Uh, this is showed our current, and we looked at all the undeveloped land in the city. And the current amount of property tax we're getting from undeveloped land is about thirty thousand dollars. Um, if we build out according to the current zone, right, just what is currently zoned, We're looking at about ten times that, three hundred and thirty thousand in property tax. We, we did a revenue projection at build out, and then we did an expense projection for the general fund. So this is not any of the utility account, this is just the general fund. Um, and we would be in the hole that way. The next scenario we ran would be if, if that undeveloped land built out at ninety percent RM zone. And then we left ten percent as ag zone, um, or this kind of wind space. Space or remainder property or whatnot, um, you'd still end up in the hole. Our current general plan projected land use map is where it shows us actually having enough. Revenue projected to, to cover to the two to sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, and then you can see the other two scenarios, if we did seventy percent RM and we'd added twenty percent as commercial land. Um, and then the last scenario was, was ninety percent R seven. This is before we've done the R five adjustment. Um, and then ten percent remainder, so. I mean, it, it's obvious that the more. Density you put in, the more homes, the more property, the more value on the land, the more property packs we're going to receive. So, right? If you're building more, you're having higher stories, whatnot, um. Then you're gonna end up with more property tax revenue. So that, that's, I think, obvious. But it's really important to recognize that our projected land use map, um. Puts us on track to remain solvent that way. I think that's a really cool thing to recognize. Uh, there's a lot of assumptions that are in here, so these are, right? You have to take that with a grain of salt. One of the assumptions that's really important to recognize is we maintained essentially a, a per household number. So on the expense side of things. So this is the major assumption that we're not changing level of service, right? The level of service is, it will remain the same as we gain more people. They would pay the same ratio that current residents are paying. Which means those expenses would remain the same. It's also just property tax changes. It's not sales tax changes, which, which is again, an important caveat to this, is that decisions made to increase sale tax. Would change the, you know, this bottom line number, and this revenue projection number. So, um, it only takes into account the property tax change for the commercial and these different scenarios, not the sales tax change. Cause that is depending on the type of commercial product that goes in. So.
So can I ask you one other question? Assumption, so on your revenue, do we assume a maintaining of the rate or the current amount? I mean, is that taken into account?
It's as if, um, it's as if everything was built out today.
Tax rate. Is that as if we maintain our rate every year and continue to do what we talked about? That's how the, that revenue was brought up.
Today's rate, which is what we're maintaining. You build out today, so if you move it ten years out, we have to maintain that same.
That's what I'm saying. So if the council decides to hold the rate, hold and not, not maintain our rate.
Yeah.
Then it changes that bottom line drastically.
Right, yeah, correct. So, or there's important distinction.
Would you please?
On the, on the sales tax revenue, we did it per household value because we felt pretty comfortable that. Most of our sales tax comes from either internet sales or because of our population, and so that's what we felt pretty comfortable about that.
Many changes with, the, the biggest one is any changes which there are can change that would affect internet bill, bill tax, now it's distributed. Could have a very, a big thing.
This is not, this is not a static environment in any way, but decisions that are made can affect this year to year.
I appreciate them running that because, oh, that question we had, you know, every time someone comes in with a development. Like, well, we need more houses. No, we need more commercial. It's like our current general plan, if we follow it, we're breaking even. So we don't have to be thinking we're afraid we're behind.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's, it's a basic, safe to say that on the commercial, not a commercial, the sales. That side, that's just above and beyond. This is break even and property tax. All the other stuff is extra, and so we're actually looking pretty good.
I think from a, from a maintain your current level of service standpoint. Yes, that tells us that we're, we're on track. The, the planning and things are coming together to be on track. The, the piece of the puzzle, though, that I think needs to be stated and, and isn't part of this analysis, is the capital projects, right? That's a totally different conversation, and that's where we don't have a number that actually paints a very good picture. Because if we're saying we're maintaining our current level of service and that's our major assumption, well. The major capital project that's staring us in the face is not part of this, right? And, and we just have to acknowledge that right now, the eighty-twenty rule, which is more than we've ever done to put at least two hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects. Um, out of sale tax every year, that is a, that is a minimum, minimal dollar amount. And, and so, yes, we're starting to plan for capital projects like we never have before. Um, but this is setting capital projects aside, and that's a, that's a major thing. Yeah.
Do you have a population increase for each of these scenarios?
Yes.
So that's something considered as well when we're talking about police and fire.
Yeah, so what we did was we maintained that ratio of expenses, right? So if we're, if our police services or our total general fund services is approximately five hundred dollars per household. As our population grows, that's where this expense ratio was, is we, we have a build out number of, of households that's anticipated. And we use the same per home, per household expense to come up with that projected expense.
So maybe when you send this to us, just let us know what's included in that, the level of service required.
We did that, we did that for the general plan.
Population that much, you're gonna have increased pass and closing and roads. But it's sitting at the same if we keep it ag as if we went to R seven, so that's not.
Yeah, these ones we would have to update.
Don't touch it.
No, I'm just, we'll, we'll update it before we said it. Yeah, we'll look.
There's just a lot of, we've, we've got a lot of things. We have to just make certain assumptions and base it on that. And, uh, and, you know, even like when we went through COVID, our assumption to what, how it was gonna affect us were different, and. So, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it, it's good, but you just have to remember that David said it's a moving target and there's. And you can't say that, oh, you know, we're on a perfect track because there's so many. Possible sub-tracks. And pieces of chicken.
And the purpose of request that I had to, I see. What does our, our future look like? And then the other aspect, though, that Dave mentioned is for capital projects. I mean, that assuming we don't have any better city hall, we don't have any better public works, so we would, he will turn that so.
Right, but if you look, I mean, I'm just totally throwing my numbers here, but I mean, we're in a whole, um, scenario too. But on scenario five, like our expenditure prediction is the exact same number along scenario two. So that, that revenue over, overall is gonna drop significantly if you add that much more population in. So. That's gonna be, that's, that's a factor we need to take into consideration as well.
Yeah, the populat, the total population number would be different, meaning the household population, right?
Road maintenance goes up, works goes up, everything else goes up too, so. It's, it's, you pick up one side of the stick, you gotta pick up the other two. Also, scenario three doesn't have percentages broken out, uh, it just says general plan projected that, so I. Let me see, like, what that means? How much events are in, how much of it's commercial?
So that's.
To compare to what the others are.
Yeah, we can pull that out.
And on undeveloped land, are you? Is that considered like the undeveloped land that, uh, Brandon, you've done in the general plan? Like as far as like, like if all of these one acre lots were to split and stuff like that? You don't know.
Like, you got hillside areas that would, is really largely.
We accounted for hillside, um, uh, easement.
Cause the way the undeveloped land is calculated in our general plan, like basically said, every single one of these lots here on something would drive or to split or something. Like, that's how we calculate it, right?
Uh, well, in the general plan, no, I think we did. In the general plan, we, we tried to account for land, um, that's developable. Not, so you wouldn't take, you know, if there's three acres of ground on the hillside, you wouldn't include it, right?
Right.
Um, there, we tried to look at geography and some things like that to, to try to better estimate.
Or just could maybe just take it by the parcels that we know are likely to be developed, just so we have a better plan.
So we, when I pulled on that Aon software, I had pulled all the parcels that were. I excluded the obvious ones, like I excluded the mountain side over there and excluded some of the obvious ones. Yeah, but, um, but, yeah, so that's just accounting for any easements or any, anything that may be undevelopable. Within all that area, and I can show you the map of what parcels I can. But I had taken every, every parcel that has not have any development on it. So I didn't, I didn't include remainder ag properties because this, we just assumed that is that we built out everything that was remaining, not. Redeveloped anything.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Trevor, in the general plan, it's got this breakdown with all the different uses and the number of units would go on. Uh, when you, on the general plan scenario three, would it match up pretty close to that?
Oh, I thought you had that sleep, sorry.
We've got our lunch here while it's still hot. Let's take a break for lunch right now. Enjoyed a nice lunch and we'll begin, uh, back with Dave.
Okay, let me, uh, we're gonna start shifting gears here one more time and, uh, get into the budget. So we've started high level, we're, we're working our way down, so. Quick reminder, January, where this is the kickoff meeting for the budget process. January through March, we do the different steps for budget development, get it through the committees. And, uh, April and May is council review, May and June is the adoption period. And, uh, then if you have truth in taxation, that goes into August. Um, and so just a quick reminder. Let's talk major budget item. And then the first one to, to discuss is our public works facility, and we're not. This is the, kind of the checklist of the process and where we're at today, right? Yeah, the you are here symbol, it would be, we're now talking finances right in the middle. Um, we've already gone with CRS A, the architect, established pace, space needs, done all the programming and whatnot, square footage. Worked that out, um, the municipal utilities committee was really good at working with staff and the CRS A to kind of. Really drill down on what are the needs now and into the future. Um, so we've got this preliminary design and layout. Um, the number up there is sixteen million, the number that CRS A gave us was fifteen million. Mac, um, wanted to recognize that there's been work that's already been done, property that's purchased and things like that, and so. You know, um, with all of the money that's already been spent, that, that's where that number comes from. So that's why that's different than the CRS A number, um, so there, everybody knows, and it's rounded, of course. Once we kind of figure out the financing aspect, then we'll, we'll get into final design and, uh, and construct. We put an option here, and the municipal utilities committee kind of brought this up, that there's two different methods that are kind of the preferred methods that we need to pick from. One is to design the building, bid that project out, and then have, you know, hire the, uh, general contractor to build it. And if you run into, you know, changes or options through that, then there would be change orders and kind of, you know, you'd work through the unknowns there. Whereas the construction manager, general contractor, CMGC process, is that during the final design, you have the general contractor on board. To kind of work through potentially, try to limit the number of change orders and the number of unknowns. Because the contractor would be providing input during the design phase, so kind of two separate methods. We're gonna have to pick which one we want to go through, um. We don't necessarily have to decide that right now, but, um, that, that's something the municipal utilities committee will kind of work on a little bit and make a recommendation in the council.
Just for example, an example, typically, most of the projects we do, design, bid, deal, right? So you design it, then we can come to the council with the, here's their bids. Uh, but on Kenya Meadows West, we did CNBC. Just an example of the two different ones.
So for this project specifically in the finances, let's drill down into the finances. Um, our goal today as staff, hopefully for the council's sake, is to find the two extremes. The, the extreme ends of the financial spectrum here are no new money whatsoever. Meaning we're taking current projects and we are gonna switch them out and put the capital facilities plans kind of in flux. And, and say the public works facility is our capital project for the foreseeable future. And so that's one extreme, is we do not want to raise any revenue, we just want to change our existing. Um, existing financial spending habits to make it fit. So I do think that that image is pretty symbolic in some ways, because you did get the statue. But then there was some stuff that came afterwards, so. So it's good to recognize that that is probably. Indiana Jones, speaking of the statue, putting the hand in his place.
I don't know.
Yeah, small in this, I'm sorry about that. The other end of the extreme is we don't want to touch existing operations and project planning. We're only gonna do this new project with new money. So those are the two ends of the extreme. Obviously, there's lots of space in between those. But as staff, we wanted to paint the picture of those two ends so that the council then can understand the extreme ramifications on either side. And be able to make decisions from there. Um, it's important to point out that all the different city funds are available to participate in this. Almost all the city funds, I should say, because the public works facility crosses all of our enterprise funds. And almost all of our governmental services too, right? Streets and parks and, and those divisions of the city are within. The scope of this building and, and it ha, that building will house those functions. Which means all of these different funds have, have a portion in play. That portion can be adjusted. Um, we've done some, we've done some percentages already to get to the numbers that we've got. But I think it's important to point out when it comes to an actual bond. We would be required to commit a revenue source to that bond. Pledge an amount and say, this is, this is the funding stream that we pledge as the backstop for the bond. However, when it comes to actually paying the bond, you can use other money. It doesn't have to be what you specifically pledged, so. The percentages can change as far as the fund allocation, how much is from streets and general fund, how much is from water, right? Depending on ability to pay and, and or other considerations, so. Um, let's dig into the one extreme, and that is the no new revenue example. Um. I want to give a huge shout out to Brandon, to Mark Larson, to Mac. Um, they went through a very extensive, very thorough, very difficult process to evaluate. Every single project on our current capital facilities plans. Um, to basically say, can we delay these or what could be delayed? In order to put the public works facility as the number one project in line for our capital facilities plan money. Um, and this is the top of the spreadsheet that they developed with a list that's a mile long of every single, you know, every single project. But just show that they, they have the project number from each CFP in the description. But just show that they they had the project number from each CFP in the description. They went through all of these different things, they rated all of the projects uh under various criteria to. To determine which ones um they felt in their estimation could be delayed. Um. Again, this is not a conversation of should be delayed, right? The, this is a conversation of could it be delayed? And uh and they came up with something, and so I think it's really cool, but. They did find a way. To make it happen, except for one fund, and that was the uh the parking bank fees, as we talked about previously, we used all of the parking bank fees. Um, and we've got a plan for using those in the future for a little bit, and so that's maybe the the missing piece, but. Um. As Ian Malcolm said, life finds a way and. And we did that. They did that, I should say. Um. We have the list of projects, if you want to see it and you want to get into it, if you want to look at those details. We want to give those three specifically a chance to speak the, the kind of the process and how we got there. And generally the idea of, yes, we can make the switch, but what? Really is the result of that switch, what really are the maybe unforeseen ramifications of delaying capital facilities projects? Um, in your estimation. So. The three of you, it's a chance to explain the process and any details if you, if you'd like, if there are questions about.
Um, I can try to explain the process just quickly. This went through, took all the capital projects and dumped them into one overall spreadsheet. Um, in in the capital facilities plans, you may recall those, those go out to build up for the foreseeable future, right? Um, we also included what we have addressed in in our utility studies, which only go out to the next ten years or so. Um. So really, we were trying to to target what what projects. Are we anticipating in the next ten years? Cause those have been figured in both, obviously both studies. And look to see based on their ranking, which ones um scored. Lower, right, but are still in that timeframe. And which ones we felt like potentially could be. Delayed. For ten years was essentially what we worked out. Um. So you you delay them, right, it just kind of builds up this. This, you know, big dollar figure at the end of the ten years, or. Really, what in reality, what that would be is you wouldn't end up doing all those projects in year eleven, right? Most likely what it really is, is you're delaying those projects. Um, you know, fifteen years or twenty years potentially, cause there's no way you'd be able to take. Not having raised. You know, utility rates or anything to cover this huge big cost and still be able to do those. Um. But in in uh spirit of trying to figure out a way. We we did try to look at which projects we felt like could. Um, go without any. Either immediate or long-term detrimental impacts. Um, that were that were bigger than what we felt like was, we would be willing to risk, we tolerate it. There will be something to me, it says, I mean. You know. Things will get delayed, they'll get called, and why it be done. Money thing. That's the short of it.
How detailed do you as a council want to go into this side of the? Equation?
Let's give us the executive summary and then if there's questions, we can dig back into it.
The executive summary is, we would basically be putting off our capital facilities plan for ten year, all of them.
Every.
That's not, not every project, not every project.
Yeah, tell us which.
Can we see the slide of like?
Um, let me, and let me also clarify too that. Like, we, we are not willing, I think we, whatever. To to um put up any of the the uh maintenance of the system, right, so the O N M portion. Of all of that, that still has to be there, that that's stuff you still have to do every year, no matter what, so. Um, you you wouldn't, we're not talking delaying that, we're just talking the capital projects.
This is the spreadsheet, right, you're getting into the, you know, sewer capital, storm drain capital. Right, the whole list there.
I I can address sewer just to give you an example, a lot of the projects that were identified, um. Uh, were based off of information prior to having some of the meter reads that we have now. And we feel, um, we're feeling pretty confident. That some of those projects may actually not. Be needed or not needed, at least for ten years. Um, that, as I mentioned earlier today, the capital facilities plan for sewer. Um, will be updated here later on this year. So we don't have the, we don't have that full analysis. To have put into this, we just had to look what we had, but. Um. That, that came up with several million dollars.
So on your list, though, I mean, the green ones are what you were saying were new.
No. The green are.
Oh, okay.
You'd have to, you'd have to go over. Head over a little bit to the.
Whether you're.
The other side where it's pretty good. The range.
You just want the rank, which column did you?
Keep, keep going over there, that, so the, those are the projects that would be delayed. That, those are the two work magics that are delayed.
Meaning, meaning.
If we go on this scenario, that would be put off.
Yeah, all of those that we. Uh. So we got. Sure, let's go to the.
Yeah.
Yep.
So those two are projects would be delayed in ten years, essentially. We'd be able to do these ones in the middle, right, you're showing me do those, this one would delay.
Yes.
Where there's nothing in the delay year, that means we would still be able.
We'd still be doing it.
Maybe, maybe you just need to provide us the spreadsheet so we can look at it.
Yeah, I'm.
I mean, that's, that's, that's very.
This is very detailed and and ultimately, if this is the choice to stay on this end of the spectrum, you're gonna want to know. Which projects are we not doing, right, and so.
Dave, if you wanna click on the summary. Tab at the bottom there. That's, that's what we came up with, so you can see. Um, yeah. You're just looking at total cost. We broke it down into deficiency and impact fee because you wanted to know like how much of this could potentially come from impact fee. Um, first that's assuming you would be collecting the impact fees, right?
Yeah.
And you realize with you, this goes along with the bonding, so what we're trying to figure out is how can we? This is the total amount, but what do we, we break down, you'll have a yearly amount that you have to pay. And so sometime, some of the money, maybe first two few years, depending on the project. It's the sewer that's really paying, the money's coming from the sewer next year, and then because when things were scheduled and when the money's there, it would be water. Paying a few several years of payments and mixtures like that. We're just looking at the total amount. And uh what could be done? Over uh a ten year area to come up with. The, the yearly payments.
And let me add that, I think what what we're trying to look at is which is more important, having the public works facility or this project or the. So that's kind of like how we were trying to look at it is. And public works is. A significant. Need, so.
Another question I have is. Do you play a risk? And you talked about, you think there are ones we could push off.
Yes.
Is there a risk value associated with?
There, there certainly is, we did not. We, we didn't quantify it, it was a number, but. Yeah, lower risk, yes.
Yes, like, that's kind of showing in your rating.
Yes.
Yeah.
And how they're rating it would almost be similar to the risk.
Right, there's three categories of the rating, criticality, um. Uh, when. Oh yeah, criticality condition and then when even.
Yeah.
And then the when needed is anticipated on when we anticipate that we would need this, right?
So when is on the latest information, like the sewer?
Yep. Right, and these were done in different years, so the when needed was when it was done. Alright, so the sewer was then two thousand seventeen, so when needed. We put in the actual year from the plan. Um, obviously that's, that story's a little bit different today. That, you know, this many years later, but trying to kind of merge all that together and come out with our best. Estimation is what we do.
We can send out the, the whole project first.
So this is based on the. Costing fifteen, sixteen million dollars.
Yes.
And not bonding them, right?
Oh, it would be bonding.
Well, this, this is just coming up with the year. For that bond, correct.
We're looking, we're looking at essentially one million dollars a year for a long period.
That's sixteen thousand.
Yeah, and so to, to figure out how to come up with a million dollars a year, that, that would be.
So one of the, and and I don't know if we want to get into the details, but maybe this is the M U C committee meeting, but. One of their huge numbers on there. Is the site work.
Yeah, I, I think you, you, there's a chance. There's a chance that 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 member comes in less. And.
Uh, the reason I say that though is when we're comparing to like, balance of the public works and some of those bids that went out. They went and did that site work. And I'm just sitting here going, is it something we could do but internally to try to? Did that out, do it ourselves without a bond. From those fees and the we, and the funds we currently have. Try to lower that bond.
That, that makes a lot of sense, I think that'd make a lot of sense, if there's a way to pay for it without bonding for that.
And it's like five million dollars, you call it. And I, I just, I can't get, I can't get my head wrapped around that.
I, I don't, I don't think you're like, I mean, that isn't their estimate, but I don't think that's what you're actually gonna say.
I agree, that's why I'm saying, I just don't see. There's not people here in town, there's not, we would get plenty of bid, and those guys are the guys looking for work.
Yeah, I, I think there's offer, there's definitely opportunities. Um, or just in in the way that we handle this to try to minimize the cost, and we would definitely do that. But in doing the analysis, we wanted to use that that high end. And and if things come in better than that, just makes it easier.
Yeah, we really did try to create the two ends of the spectrum, right, as much as we could so that we wouldn't be shifting past those. But you're absolutely right, there's a lot of creative space in mental. Um. And I think the committee probably would. Need to be tasked with digging into that.
And and my point of that is, I think that's something that has to get done. Like, very soon. Deciding on whether we're gonna do C M G C or we're gonna do that, whether we're gonna take on a portion ourselves and try to do it. I, I mean, that has to, it seems like we are. This is great information, but. We gotta decide the path too.
Yeah, I think this tells us that that there's potentially the path to get started on, and we can afford to do it. This, this way. Um. So we can get, we can get moving forward with some confidence that we're not heading down a road with the campaign work, right? Um, but there's. Still some ongoing conversation about. You know, what's the best path? And and should we really be delaying? All of these or not?
Should we talk to the other end of the spectrum?
So just clarify, so. How, what's the term of the bond, the length?
Was it a few years?
Was it twenty?
Fifteen or twenty, I think. Twenty, twenty. I, I can't remember which one. Have to go back. You gave me the figures, whatever, you gave me the million.
The million dollar number I think was on the twenty year bond.
Yeah.
So this is postponing everything ten years?
And then what are we doing the last ten years? To get to that point. And where are we at?
Not, not in a good place?
Everybody goes like this.
Um. I think what you have to do, I mean, essentially what you'd be doing is reevaluating. And where you keep going, if you can continue to delay more for another ten years or. Um. This.
But you're still doing some capital facility projects, you would still be doing some of those projects. It's just, you'd have to choose which one.
Right, you, it would be a pair back, is that.
And what you need to see is the next part of day, because we're talking the two extremes of what we're gonna do and. And the best one is probably gonna be some combination, um. Um, between there and we never got, what we wanted to do was hit the ends and then to. To hear up this conversation of. What do we fit, does the council feel, where do we come and what combinations of the two extremes? Is the best for the city? And because there's pluses and minuses, as David put it, with his pictures on both of them. He didn't put in. He didn't put the picture on the next one in that I had proposed, cause my first thought was civil unrest. And he just put up the yield sign, but.
Yeah, so to that point, maybe prime the pump a little bit more for a more detailed conversation and and again, this, this can take as much time as you want. Um, the other end of the extreme is that it's all new revenue, right, that we're not touching any existing operations. Which basically means raising, raising rates, right? And so we looked at all the different funds that would participate. General fund, capital projects would be looking at a twenty-five percent. Property tax increase, along with water rate, sewer rate. You know, sanitation, right, garbage, those are the percentages that it would have to increase if it was all new, right? So again, extremes, gut punch kind of, kind of conversations.
Dave, these are all increases from current rates right now.
Current rates right now. Especially the one that everybody loves, right, the storm drain rate. The reason for that is because the number that came back, right, the CRS A number that came back was significantly different. And what we had anticipated, so that's why that's different. Which. Is very unhelpful. And so this is not like a per month number or anything, right, that's just the amount of yearly revenue we get. And the amount of additional revenue that we would need, right, this yearly amount of revenue we would need. Um, and so that's how you get that percentage. So it's a very, it's a very, um. Rudimentary, not rudimentary, it's a very basic calculation, right, we didn't get into too many additional details there, that would need to be refined, obviously, if that. Is where we'd want to look, but. Um. The part that I think is really important to recognize, right, this, this impact fee area. Is where we would need a significant amount of money in impact fee based on what is calculated as impact fee eligible. But that doesn't mean, as we've already talked about, that impact fee money is gonna come rolling in, that that's the, you know, development dependent. And so that probably puts additional burden on utility rates to some level.
Correct, because if if you don't have, if you don't have lots out there. That you could actually have somebody pull a building permit on, it just doesn't exist, right? So the impact fee. Is a, is a huge part of that.
Okay, so. On the impact fees. Let's say we decide to increase that, and we have to go through a whole new impact fee study. And take time to do that process for each one of these funds?
Well, we, yes, I mean, the quick answer is, yes, you would have to update this to to show. For example, the, the uh. Public works facility is only included in the storm ring. Um, you know, uh, Kevin's facilities plan and utility grade analysis. It needs to be added to water, it needs to be added to sewer in order to actually project what those would need to be. Um, but just doing the, the updates to those, cause those, those two, water and sewer especially are. Are, will be finished here in the first part of the year, or the first half of the year, so. Um, we'll be able to account for that. And we'll put that in, right, I mean, you, you would, you would obviously put that in, cause that's a capital project, but. Um. I guess that's it.
Well, your impact fee should be. Taking this into account anyway.
It, it, you'll still account for the amount. That, you know, available ground out there that's not developed, what the general plan is planning for it to be, it'll still be in there, it's just. If you have no developments that are developing any of this and creating lots or building permits, then you won't be collecting it.
You may have mentioned this, but why are the percentages low in places, why, one of us is this great, but then there's a general across the board?
Well, because what we did originally and Mac.
What we did is I took the yearly revenue in each of those funds. And said, okay, well, we, working with Brandon, we took. All the different sources for allocation, going back to the picture with all the hands, we're gonna do an allocation. And he did an allocation in which. And he did an allocation in which we have a chart that shows the original one. That says, okay, this much is ten percent. Twenty percent is water, twenty percent is sewer, five, we had those rough estimates as to what part of the facility. Would relate to each of these functions of the city. And then he took that sixty five percent of that allocation. That says twenty percent, sixty five on all of them. That have impact fees, thirty five percent is impact fees, sixty five percent is for the current. Uh, what we're currently doing.
Which is essentially amount of ground that you have developed. Right now, sixty five percent is roughly developed, thirty five percent left to develop.
You know, and so we did that. So using those. Same things, we said, okay, that means on a yearly basis, we have to come up with this much money for each of these funds. And if their total revenue is this. Um, just take water, if your total revenue is two million and you need to come up with a hundred and thirty nine thousand roughly every year. Then we've got to increase the water revenue by nine percent. In order to get that yearly bond payment. And so, but some funds bring in more money. So it just, it just varied a little bit that way, so. And as Brandon is saying, is many of our our current rate studies and our current. Capital facilities plans and our current. Impact these studies do not take into account. This current thing for public works. Now, some of them, we had. A half fifty percent amount in there. Because we figured we were looking at an eight million dollar project up originally. So a few of those studies, when we came up with the writ rates, had a. The latest study that we did was storm, storm drain. But it had the eight million dollar figure and not a sixteen million dollar figure. So that's. Um, so that that target moved on us.
Right, um, does that answer the question of why it'd be different for each fund?
Not really. I mean, if if you just simply said, okay, how much do we have to raise each one? Again, sixteen million and they're all penalized the same amount. I mean, that to me just seems the easiest way to say. What would be the impact? We need to make sixteen million, so that means everyone is is raised twelve percent. You know, you've got one there, a hundred eighty four percent going up.
I think it's because that's how much of the facility it uses.
Yeah, and that was right, that really was making sense with. If this is based off of the facilities really used, then okay.
Yeah, well, we do that and we have the, we have it showing.
Yeah, like sanitation is like two percent. Of the overall facility, so it's only going up by four percent because there's not that much.
Okay.
To generate, but twenty percent is like water and twenty percent sewer and so those one and storm drain. And the storm is already, we're trying, we're trying to make up for lost time, so to speak, and so. That one, I don't know, that's why you're seeing bigger percentages in those, okay? You can allocate it just straight down, divided by the total, and then those would, and that would be the same. But we waited then, if you wanna look into that.
That goes back to the point about. We will have to pledge certain revenue sources. But if the water fund has the ability to pay more, we could use that money to pay it. Um, but we do have to come up with some pledge, right, and show the breakdown of where we're putting that money to come from.
And we still have to basically come up with a million dollars from some source every year.
Well, for example, when we update the capital facilities class, we're gonna have to put a dollar figure in there, and that's a portion of the total. That we're gonna assume is the cost that this the water fund is gonna need to have to generate. So the only way to come up with that dollar figure is to take the whole and figure, well, what's the portion we're gonna allocate to water? That's how we do it.
That's why wouldn't your impact fees go at this same percentage, whether we do it one way or the other, because you're gonna need to put the full amount when you do the new state. Not half the.
Well, but each each fund. Is a little bit different, or each project is a little bit different. For what is an existing deficiency for what is the, what is a. Um, impact, right, the new development, which portion, right, it it's different for each on than for each project.
And some capital projects are a hundred percent utility and some, at the most, they're thirty five percent impact field.
Yeah, it does, I think that's why. That whole project list, it gets that granular, right, of which project is generating how much impact fee? Or could potentially be paid for with that amount of impact fee versus utility.
But don't get too set on these because, like I said, the sewer. Was coming up, was generating, I mean, on the other end. Not this, not this one, but on the other end, the the delay um approach. The sewer was generating a large portion of that. And and a lot of those projects are gonna look different when we update the planner, so. This, this is a snapshot of time, that's all I'm just trying to say.
And sometimes snapshots are not very pretty picturing. And I think that's what everybody's feeling right now, right, that it. Neither end really feels comfortable, and I think that's telling, right, that we all, we all are recognizing we need to cobble together. All the resources, all the opportunities that we can, and so that's why, that's why. Everything's on the table, so to speak, right? Are there, are there? Assets that we can sell or utilize, and whether that's land or other, are there, are, you know, the ARPA money is sitting there and maybe. A portion of that can be used to bring down the the amount of bond and, you know, there's, there's lots of different options, I think. Within that space of you're either raising rates to cover this or you're delaying projects entirely on one end.
There, you know, we, there's been talk, you know, we never know, ARPA came along, that was unexpected, there may be grant money come along. In the process, there may be something out there, there may be other sources, whatever, as David said, we do own some property. We're gonna, we're gonna chop leaves, we've got, what do we do with the old property? You got the X card, there, there maybe there's some revenue that can come in. From those type of things, so. And there's a lot of middle ground between these two things. To be researched, to look at, to spend time. And when you look at those two. The most important thing to me is somewhere and somewhere between those two lines is where we we need to fall. And some areas of utility rates, maybe you can take a little bit more of it here. And others you figure you can't, and we just, and that's a tough decision, the council is just gonna have to weigh. Is how do we do it? Where is that line drawn and this and that line? And maybe by fun, what happens in each of those funds and so forth, where we, what do we do? And there's so, to me, there's compromises on the thing to come up to a solution in the middle.
Boxer dealings from the council?
Can you put some back on about the rate increase in the middle of that? Michelle, what word is the? What word?
It it's all, it's all somewhere in the middle. I mean, it it's nice, it's nice to know we can pay for it. I mean, that that's the biggest question to be answered, but it's how we do it and what we come up with, and I think. I don't know, I I still struggle with the numbers that we have, I don't know about, I don't know about Rod or anybody, do I?
I felt that when I was going through it. You know, we, it's really simple, if it was half that, be, you know, which is what we were looking at at one point. Be a whole lot, the conversation would be a little bit different too, because you went, your face might not be quite the same as you.
I mean, until we actually have a bid.
We don't know.
That we're gonna actually go, you know, from someone who's gonna go build it for X dollars. We're just doing our best.
That's why I think we.
That's why I think we gotta get more before we make a decision.
I do.
I think it's gotta go back to committee and work on it and convene and try to. Come to a closer. Decision or closer estimate on what this is gonna cost us really. And then these numbers will definitely change, I hope, and then. It means you're gonna swallow that feeling.
You know, Brandon, are we, are we really talking about, um, it's gonna change by ten to eight percent? Got my battery. Or are we talking about, this is gonna, this is gonna cut in fifty percent and we'll be back down to a normal range? Because if if literally we're up at this high. And all we're gonna do is shave maybe ten percent off by going back and trying to renegotiate and try to push some other things. To me, that's still just, it's a no. I mean, that is just so much, do you have money?
We can't do that, no.
No.
I think you've got to. And talking with West Bountiful is doing the type of project down there. I mean, their numbers are half what.
It's really not the same type of project, that's like. They're a completely different city, different spot, different side, different community. So it's not the same. Right, yeah, right, the the building is the is the largest item, but the site work was significant. In their eh, in their estimate and. There, I mean.
Their built out population is what we are now.
And it's only.
Yeah, there's stuff there that they don't have that we need on our side yet.
And and as far as like the C R S A is concerned, I mean, they they only developed a concept level plan at this point. So. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to be proactive and be out in front of some of this, but I just, we're like, we're not. We. Not quite there on the number to be super confident on what we're really planning for.
Ways to come up with that number, sorry, Brandon. And this, and again, this goes in my opinion into a committee, that discussion, but. I'm just saying, but you can take a concept plan, we don't even have to award it. You can take, I mean, it happens every day, we can have contractor give us a design bill proposal on a concept plan. With, I did one last week and the general contractor got twenty five thousand dollars for the review. If if awarded to that guy, it wasn't her four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Right.
Um, I mean, and it was a larger project.
Yeah.
And so you can send those out, that happens every day, and then we don't even have to award it, we get, but it would get you down to a number, it's a more real number.
Right, well, we can't, we can't go in and start to project. Um, utility rate increases or anything like that. Until we know the exact number that we're planning, so, yeah, this. Right, that's my trip. I was saying it's a snapshot because if we assume that it really did cost us sixteen million. Then this is the one end, and the other end is the other end, but what we actually end up with is going to be something likely that's less than that. Um, how much less, I guess we don't know yet until we do more work on it, but that's where we're at right now.
But at the same time, you gotta have some type of ballpark, throw it out there, uh, okay, we'll get a sixteen million, but if we shop around and stuff like that, we'll get fourteen. To me, that's still just way out of control, so that's why I'm saying. Normally, in 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 my old different world, when you have a project, you have a come to Jesus meeting where you say, you know what? This project was working fine, we run into this kind of issue, and now we have to have another go no go meeting. And whether we, like I said, put it away for ten years, now, and please understand, I had, I fully admit, I know nothing about this because this was all done and. Uh, before I got in here and I'm just kinda catching up. So I am fully admitting my ignorance on it, but at the same time. If we're only talking about bringing it down just a small amount of million. I still don't see, I mean, to me, I would almost look at it the other way, what can we afford? Okay, we can afford this, well, that's what we get then. I don't know. Sorry.
So. Hearing you, Joel, and I, the sixteen thousand is so hard to swallow, I'm making fifteen million. But we have, we're, we have no option but to build that. We have no option, we have to. Okay, I I thought.
Salt thing. I seen it, and it is, and we could, I'm saying.
We have no choice.
No, we have, we have a choice to build something. Sixteen million, or is there something less? I mean, we just did the same thing with fire department. It was like, okay, here's the big grand thing that they wanted, okay, here's what we can actually do. Here's what we can munch down, and here's all that we can actually afford. Because, yeah, I I I understand completely what you're saying, there's definitely a need for it, and I'm I'm not trying to get public works. But. The building, at the same time, if if we're building the same building that's over there in West Bountiful, we're South Weaver. Half the stuff in this town is put together with duct tape. I don't wanna do duct tape on it, but I'm just saying, this isn't a wealthy. Area that we can just say, oh, you know, I'm gonna do a bond, that's gonna trickle everything you have for. Yeah, it'll be twenty years, ten years.
I don't wanna have to fund at all, I don't, I'm trying to, like, the thought of increasing these rates makes me sick. But I legitimately don't know what else to do to pay for building even at eight million dollars. We, this is a problem that I would counsel, we all have to decide on. We say that the, you know, just go to hell on this, because it has to be done, like, there's, there's no option.
That model does not have to be done.
It's sixteen million, I agree.
That's why I just said that.
So what would you cut, Joe?
I don't know.
Exactly, we look at it a lot.
I know you guys have, but I also know we don't have the money, so we can say whatever we want to in here, but the fact still comes down to it is. If the city can't pay for it, then we can't build it.
We can leave the rest standing aside and we can do the salt outside on any day.
We know we can't do that with the salt.
Wow.
And I'm not saying we don't do anything, so fuck trying to go that way like that.
That's what we need to do. Figures, we have no idea what they are, I think snapshots, it's a shot that are, as far as I'm concerned. I think that can come way down from what it is, and the building experience that I've had, and we can still have what we want. I think this is way out of line for what she's done, so I think. There's no sense sitting here and arguing about it until we know exactly where we're at, that's why I say let's get it back into committee. Get a little more research done on them, and then get back together and say, okay. Do you find that number in the winter?
So I'd actually though, I'd like to, let let's assume that it's not sixteen million, let's assume we can do it for eight. For ten. Then we, right now, should have this mission of what we do, if we can get it down to eight. What do we increase? What do we not do? Cause it, I agree, we can get it lower. But I'd really love to have the conversation with everybody right now, and with it keep it down. What are best solutions?
It's a, it's a mixture though.
Yeah, I think. I mean, you gotta let us do, you gotta let us do a little bit more work to give you some recommendations on options of things that you could do. This this was just to give you a a rough idea that there's.
That's all, okay, anyways, need to move on.
I got you.
Dave, let's go to animal control. Animal care.
But but Mayor, I think it'd be a stick, let's move on, what are we doing?
I think we're going back.
In my opinion, we're not stopped.
Okay, so it's.
I mean, it's not a stop, it's. One, we need to get an idea of what are the options that meet in the middle. And in my opinion, Joel, to answer your question, it's more than a million dollars savings. I mean, I I just can't, Adam, we can't go build something that meets our needs closer down to the ten million dollar. I just can't get, it's just beyond mine.
Yeah.
Some perspective, I feel like there is a committee here that's been working on this, and there's those of us in town who aren't on the committee, so we're just kinda getting this information right now. So it it's a little bit like, if we could get some more information on what's happening in the committee. Like I.
Got all the information, because this, no, we've never had this.
No, I was talking about as far as the size of the building and why we're going and listening somewhere to West Bountiful, like the size of West Bountiful, what we need, like all of that.
I thought the whole package was to like that whole, yeah.
I thought we.
Yeah, that has been given to everybody.
No, no, I know.
There have.
We, we sent about email out maybe a month ago, and here's the update, for everybody. Yeah. So we went just for information. We sat down with everybody in public works and said every wish list item they could ever conceive of, what they want. So the sixteen million is a wish list item? No, no. No, then, yes, then we build that down, and then we build it down. So it's not. Realistically speaking, getting it down to eight is probably not likely. Well, the, the site work, when you said the site work, it was all the fill and the, and the pavement and everything like that, that was really. Five, okay, four or five?
Five, something.
Five, okay, okay, that's helpful. So five of the three. Okay.
High estimates for the, the overhead costs, right? There were just percentages.
Absolutely necessary, and that's not any extra or wishless or, that's. And then we have overhead costs and we have site plan costs that are killing us basically, on top of.
There's a million dollars in this.
Okay.
Administration.
That helps me out, thank you.
I think the actual building was about six. Yeah, the building itself, I believe, was sick. And if you don't have that information, we'll say.
We can take that, like, holding this for massage chair.
Fairness, you need to know that most of the work that has been done up to this point was a needs analysis. And getting it, paring it back and down to what it felt like was. Uh. A mixture of looking out in the future to make sure that, you know, two years down the road, we don't look at it and say, oh my gosh. We need more already, you know, versus feeling like there's gold planted things in there.
Feeling there is any of them.
All of the committee are working very hard to make sure that it's not. I just didn't realize so much of the cost was on site plan and. I didn't like that.
It's, it's a, it's a variety of things. So, yes, there's definitely things that can bring that number down, for sure.
As far as the information that the council or and or the committee wants. Um. Obviously, getting down to what's our actual number. It sounds like that's what is being thrown to the committee is figure out the steps to get us a real number that we can kind of bank on, so to speak.
Well, I think we're all unanimous, of our, the committee and the council, that that's what we're gonna do, so.
They can do like, we're sure we can send it out for a more estimate. Yeah.
I mean, it's not like anybody in here is arguing for the biggest and the best. We're just arguing the, what we need and then some of them.
When, when we looked at it, if we really wanted to do something, it would work forever. Build up, cause it's like when we got that building, it was like just big enough to fit what we had.
At the time.
And it's just because the canal company was selling it, so we jumped on it. And now we're in the same boat again.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, I mean, we see this with the FAC, we've outgrown SBC.
But there's no, there's no left. Once this is built, there's no.
Yeah, that balance between current needs, future needs, and current ability to pay is, is really the balance we're trying to strike here, right? So. Yeah, I, I appreciate the dialogue, I appreciate the perspectives, but. Yeah, we, we're all working on that, on the same thing here, it feels like, and, and it's a big elephant. And, and it is not that fun to try to digest all this with it. So as a committee, we can, we can work through that. I think we've got the right players who are, who are working through that. And to get to another number. And deciding kind of the process, right? Are, are we're gonna do CMGC or whether we feel like we should do the design bid build? At some point, we're gonna need final design, right? And so we, we probably need to be working down those steps as well of putting out a proposal. At some, you know, at some stage to, to start that. So if we can do that at a minimal cost. Right? You're gonna have to put a certain amount of dollars in to get the final design. And so that balance of, well, what money are we gonna use currently to, to get to that final design? So. And it's just a lot of moving pieces, but we can arrange those, I feel like.
So do we need to talk the timeline in here or in committee about what we have to do this year? For the building? Cause if we have to go back and get in a, a bid. We have to see what we can do for site work. I mean, what is our goal to have this started?
I think the committee should meet next week, therefore, I think.
I mean, to do all of that and to get the full design out, we tend, and you're talking to end up some number early.
Yeah, that's a pretty lot of process.
Yeah, I think if I was gonna say anything, I would just say, suggest that we do our best not to delay. At all, you know, um. My experience is that the longer, you know, just as time moves on, things just get more expensive, and so I think we're better off. If, if the addition is, we know we need a public course facility, we just go for it. And then as we're going, we'll, we'll be able to determine, okay, now we know this, we know what the number is, and so. Here's how we think it's best to pay for it, and then that's when you guys say that you're known.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
One hundred percent, you would cheap as possible, I mean.
Well, and, and some of your guys, I agree, I see some how to get it down.
Yeah.
Like our outside story, can be a pull bar type thing versus right now, we're a metal structure.
Individual.
You know, it can be a lot of different things.
Yeah. So I think this is probably a good point to, to maybe talk quickly about CMGC versus design bid build. Because the idea of having a, a GC there during the design is so they can talk materials, and they can talk options and whatnot. My personal opinion is that going through the CMGC route probably reduces the questions later on. That we can have some of those discussions, but right up front, you're right, you're pulling them in earlier rather than waiting, so. Again, I think the committee probably should have that conversation and make a, make a recommendation to the council, but. That's probably another piece that we need to decide fairly quickly is which option.
I, I actually think that is our next step, is deciding that process.
So next week may not be a great thing.
Yeah, you don't need to be here.
But if, if, if you do a CMU, then you're not gonna get the quick answer. You're gonna send out proposals for CMGC. Have them as a, as a consultant, all of a sudden. Versus the cost of the project. If you think of it as a design bill. You go out and you select your contractor, he acts now as your CMGC, and that's what they become. And you have a fixed price, and then they start whittling it down from there. You still get a CMGC to work through the project. But you don't, but you're not gonna get a price quick from them. You're just gonna get their fee proposal.
Right. Now, that's why I'm saying, I think in, in committee, we've got to decide, which are we pursuing, and then, in my opinion, let's go.
Cause we have the, we have the concepts already.
Yeah.
To find out with a proposal, and that's first. The only thing it re, it comes back to, they won't price out site work that way. That comes back to us.
Yes.
Cause they won't have that information to bid.
I'm more confident on the, on estimating the site work than like CRSA would do, in my opinion. I agree.
Yeah.
Great.
Um, animal care and control, next budget item. This is super quick, uh, more of a heads up than anything. Uh, the state law changed last year where the county can charge a property tax. For providing animal care. Right now, we contract with the county. Um, but they plan to just simply, um, increase their property tax rate. To the tune of what they already received from their contracted cities. So if we step out of that rate and they step into it. Just like we did paramedic, only in the reverse, right? That, that because of that, we most likely will have to go through truth and taxation. We're talking about approximately twenty-five thousand dollars a year for us, so it's not a huge number. But we would reduce our property tax amount by that number, and they would increase it, so. Those details will be figured out as we go, but that's animal care and control in a nutshell. Questions about that? Okay, next major item, uh, the Weaver River Parkway Trail Project, um. Quick background on this, for ten years approximately, Brandon. Uh, the city has been putting in grant requests to construct this trail. We have been, because we are the local jurisdiction, essentially, it's within our city boundary, we've been the one doing that. Um, however, it's very important to note that. Uh, we are not the trail owners or the future trail name Ener. Met with Davis County and Trails Foundation in Northern Utah. And there's an important distinction. So as you can see, you know, here is I eighty-four. And there are five distinct segments of trail that have been identified that need to be constructed. Um, Phase Three has already been constructed. Trails Foundation went in and did that. They're, they already done that.
Is that, is that Conwood?
It's not quite to Conwood.
Where are you, where?
No, it's, it's actually, yeah, this is the RV in, right here, and then from the RV project. Going east, Trails Foundation has built a segment of trail. This brown section, what is called Phase Five. And there are property owner questions, and so that's why it's Phase Five, and we're gonna set that aside for now. These three phases right here, phase one, two, and four, um. There is approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars of grant money that has been awarded already. To construct those three segments.
Four then, four, there's a four in?
Yes, Trails Foundation has done, I think, a portion of that, if not all of that.
I think they've done it.
And, and the route isn't, isn't. So, lots of progress is being made on this. So while the city has been, you know, trying to get grant money and been in charge of that. These other organizations are working to, to do other portions, right? Trails Foundation has bought a lot of property and they're able to work on their own property, which they have done. Um, but this I eighty-four point is an important point. This is the line of demarcation between what Trails Foundation considers their trail or the Weaver River Parkway Trail. Right along the north of I eighty-four. But these two segments, Davis County considers Bonneville Shoreline Trail. So Davis County is actively working with both gravel pits to secure the permanent easements. Eighty-nine is right here. The box culvert is, is in now. Davis County has already put in more than half a million dollars to improve that above and beyond what UDOT did when they put it in. As part of the same project, I should say. Um, UDOT was simply gonna put the box culvert in, no wing walls, no connections from where it was in the ground up to where people could use it, anything like that. Davis County has put in half a million dollars as what was considered a betterment to the project. Um, so that UDOT would construct all of those things. So that's the, that's the overview of the project. Um, the next steps. Are. Um, Davis County, we're kind of waiting for Davis County at this point. Um, Jeff Euler with Davis County is working with the Duke Gravel Pits. They will be, uh, once they've got the property easement finalized. Then we can move to the next step, um, which would be the environmental study. Because this is federal money. Um, there are federal steps and federal process, the next of which would be this environmental document. Now, we've been told that we can do what's called the categorical exclusion. Level of environmental study, which is the lowest level, the cheapest level. We're thrilled with that. There are levels above and beyond that would have been quite expensive. Um. The reason we're waiting for Davis County before we start this process is because property ownership becomes part of the study. And if we already own it or already have access to it, then it makes this step so much easier. So that's why we're waiting. Um, they've told us that they anticipate within the first quarter of twenty twenty-three that they'll have the, the easements. Um, then the environmental study, there's a little bit of an important piece of the environmental study, and that is. Um, obviously, there's a cost to doing that type of study. Uh, the estimate at this point is approximately fifty thousand dollars. Uh, if it was our trail, then that would be our cost, but it's not our trail. We're not gonna maintain it, right? We're just the coordinating piece here, so we're working with Davis County and Trails Foundation. Um, and, and we feel like they should pay for that, if not. Most of it, all of it, right? If not all of it, most of it. Um, but we're still the coordinating entity, um, in all of this. Davis County, we have spoken with, um, two of the county commissioners, I think, to this point, and they have both indicated. Luckily, that, um, that they would participate in that. So details yet to be.
Equal a hundred percent?
The details have not been worked out, but they said, yes, we recognize, you know, our responsibility in this and, and count on us for, for participation.
And they did do that because on the call, I told them, there's no way I would agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have the money, so it was, okay, here's, here's the big gap between the two.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. There is a claiming element to the environmental study, which I think is important, um, and that is. What they study, maybe Brandon can speak to this more specifically, I forgot. There's, there are basically three things that the environmental study looks at. It looks at historical.
Resources.
Historical resources, it looks at wildlife, if it affects wildlife, and, and anyway, there's a few other things.
Better species.
In dangers, yes. Um. But because of the nature of that, you almost need to do it from spring to spring, right? You can't. You need to be able to do it during a time where you can actually evaluate some of the wildlife and whatnot, so. If we wait six months, let's say, for this, and then we get started on that. We've probably missed the window of time when they can do the study, anyway, push it till the next year. The grant money, we've talked to WFRC, or at least they told us on the, on the call, um, that if they need to move around the money. Um, to a next year or something like that, they're available to do that. They, they're like, we can move around, um, the money, so when you're ready, we're, we're gonna grant it. It's not like if we don't get this done in six months, then the money goes away. So that's, that's good news. Um. And so that, that then is the, is the environmental study. Once we get that back, then we can move into the final piece of, you know. Designing it and constructing it. Um, it's a six percent match on the grants. Again, it doesn't feel like this is really our money, but, um. That's the amount of money that WFRC has, has already granted for the three phases. So Trails Foundation, when they built Phase Four, um, they said that segment cost them about fifty thousand dollars. So we're gonna have plenty of WFRC money to, to finish the trail. Um, it's gonna cost way less than that. It's not necessarily a budget item for us right this second, um, other than, um. If, for whatever reason, Davis County or Trails Foundation said, we're not coming up with all of that. You know, then, then there's a conversation, but we're still, we're still working out those details, um, and the council should know that that's the. That's where we're at in this project. Eric?
Um, we just need to talk, just so the council's aware, but. We will be responsible for, and we're to respond on those. So everyone that rolls their ankle, everyone that gets halfway down and decides they're having chest pain, everyone with seven heat exhaustion. That will be responding down there.
Did they catch your equipment?
Well, that's what we discuss, if there's a big enough gate, we can drive a vehicle down there, that's fine. If there's not a big enough gate. Then we gotta do with Farmington and other cities have done, and get side by sides or something.
Oh, jeez. For this, we have, um, bicycles, so we already have mountain bikes.
Anyways. You ever seen a pub crawler bike?
Yeah.
Be an example of. A new level of service idea, right? And once you have new amenities, then you've got to service those amenities.
I have another question. We're done giving chief woman crap, are we done?
No, I just wanted a transparency, and there's not zero impact with.
And we appreciate it, we always.
Always involved there. Oh, then, that.
So we're talking about the purple line and the green line?
Uh, yeah, those are pretty much ones remaining. You can do.
Does that include a trailhead in Cornea?
No.
Why not?
It could.
If we have the grant money.
Yeah, you can, you could.
I think we should talk about trailhead right here, Andrew.
Well, that, there already is a trailhead there.
Well, there's a dirt area that people park right there.
It's one of the trails is dirt.
Things to think about where trailheads are gonna be like access, what kind of um, garbage facilities are gonna wanna have, like how about the Fruit Loops we've had a big issue with. Does anybody wanna provide trash collection? Do you have a big dumpster there? Do people just leave all their stuff in there?
Put the sign and pack it in, pack it out, we're done.
We need a park. There's not a parking area down like at the Cornea Drive trailhead.
No, there's not not down there.
Nothing.
No, I was I thought you were talking about Bishopans.
Is that Cornea Drive that started the purple?
That's where the sheriffs go.
Why do they have an issue with the Ethan? Cause there's already an easement going down through there. There's a thirty foot easement all the way down through there.
Well, they're trying to.
It's not for public access, but assuming they're trying to put it right on top of that.
I actually don't, I haven't. Talked with Jeff to know exactly the route that he's taking.
Okay, so that's my second question on this. We're not waiting on Jeff for property easements for the other section of Bonneville Trail. You guys know how I don't wanna do the shoreline connection. I think it's still too good a waste of money. Or they're proposing it. We're not waiting on that, right? We're just waiting on.
It's a separate industry from any Bonneville Shoreline up on there.
And we don't have to maintain any of this?
None of this will be our trail. We still need to go through the um, we need to, we need to have an agreement with these entities that that. You know, um, what finalizes. That they're going to do it. So I, that's what I, I think we need to make sure that. You have that on record. That's a recorded degree with, you know, with them. Um. But that's been the verbal conversation so far. With Davis County and the Trails Foundation. This section, no, it just be just.
It'll be similar to where it is from four seventy five in New York.
Right, which what it was behind my parents' house for about ten years and now it's cloud.
And could, I mean, yeah, that's a way. If that.
It's not on the plan up at um. Twenty fifty.
Okay.
Now they could change it obviously, but as a for the plan.
The same Weaver River Parkway is what went through West Haven was dirt road, was planned to stay dirt road and got paved. And now West Haven files it.
But to my point, if we have an agreement that re- that requires that they maintain it.
Right.
Then if they choose to pay it.
Fine, I guess.
Yeah, that's something that we need to make sure is included in there as well.
Yeah, I think that's a real is is really important.
It is important too, as I've looked at it. You have to remember when all this that we're talking about now is completed, you got a trail on the east and a trail on the west and the two don't connect. Cause the the reason that that brown. Is delayed is because there's problems with it and that's and that's the connection. Let's say here's a whole trail, but there's a major connection.
I know, but like people will be like, there's a trail quarter mile away. Well, they're gonna go through it.
Cause it happens now. There's a trail there now that you can ride a bike all the way through. It happens now.
So if there's people trespassing on that, those calls are ours or those calls are yours?
The. My understanding, those that are fighting the hardest are you in time. Do not have it go through there.
But the Trail Foundation is already, you guys, been the one that's laid out in talking with those property owners and they're just continuing those conversations.
But when people trespass on their property and on South, we're just saying. Public safety, respond to that, yeah.
Well, most likely they're gonna call, they're gonna call.
Yeah.
It's just gonna increase with.
They are never come one in the United States, it's like our wellings, so.
Anything else with Weaver Parkway Trail project?
Just for the record, I don't wanna use the middle main to connect it from Leighton and I don't think it needs to come across the mountain. I still think it can go down right at one ninety three.
They can't do that.
No, but that's what Jeff is pushing for.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
I'm just stating my disdain. I still like it and I still think it's a waste of the county's money if it's pushed. So for anyone who's able to talk to anybody. I might just call Jeffrey Campbell. But. Can't really share. If we can connect the Bonneville Shoreline Trail by maybe three down the front of the road and connect to that Cornea Drive. Trailhead, that makes sense.
I haven't seen a plan, but I have been in the discussion.
So the reason I'm saying this right now is because once we have this connected, that's the next one that's gonna be. If you put it down Cornea Drive like that. Are you just gonna be standing in your bathtub with the documents looking at all these people?
Okay, next budget item that I'm talking about is dispatch. Let's talk about the countywide dispatch conversation taking place. Um, there's a virtual consolidation in progress. I think we've. That shouldn't be news to everybody, right? Virtual consolidation means all four county dispatch. Centers move to the same. The same system, same equipment, same software, right? Yeah, it's, it would be so that if you're working out of one dispatch center, that information can easily transfer to other dispatch centers. Um, there's lots of really good work that's already taking place, progress being paid. The conversation is now shifting a little bit to the next step, which is physical consolidation. Right now, there are four dispatch centers in the county. Bountiful City operates one. Um, Davis County Sheriff's Office operates one, Lake operates one, and Clearfield City operates one. Um. Their conversation is to have Clearfield City and Davis County Sheriff's Office. Get out of the business and have Leighton City become the dispatch center for North County. Bountiful City become the dispatch center for South County. Bountiful already essentially doing that. Um, so it's really North County that's kind of figuring that out, but Davis County Sheriff's Office, obviously. Um, dispatches other places, unincorporated county, highway patrol, you know. APMP, other, other. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's a proper Leighton City. So uh, the conversation at this point is, once Leighton becomes that. And they've gotta figure out kind of a governance model as well as a, as well as a. Uh, financing model. And so. We, of course, would be dispatched out of Leighton. It doesn't make sense for us to be part of Bountiful, so. Um, as this progresses, that that's becoming more and more uh, clear that that would take place. We had already been having some conversations with Leighton City about what that may look like. This just pushes that along very rapidly, actually. The governance proposal is to have an executive board with elected officials. Um, member advisory committee, which um, remind me, was that gonna be? Uh, more kind of the management, executive team. And then you've got the police chiefs and fire chiefs that have user committees. And the idea is that those different committees would would provide information up through the executive board to to make final decisions. And of course, kind of. Final budget call stuff would have to work through the executive committee, through Leighton City Council, if Leighton City is the one operating it, but. They really wanted to make sure that every city had a voice, everybody was involved in kind of the decision making and the process there. Um, and then they wanted to make sure that the fee structure was was appropriate and fair. So what the proposal is right now is to have uh, revenue. From nine one one revenue being uh, part of this and then a population, the base fee would be population based. And then and then there is call volume. Portion as well. So that's the calculation that they're looking at. Those numbers haven't been spit out yet. From from the calculation, it's still. Literally last week was the last meeting on this and it was the first time they had given this kind of proposal and the structure on it. Um, the next step would be to actually draft the language of the interlocal agreement. That's the dispatch conversation in a nutshell. Um. We are. Able. Probably by June or July to make the switch. Delaying um, officially. So again, this countywide conversation is kind of putting us along. To make that happen. Us in Clearfield, I think, are the first ones who would be ready to make that switch. Um, as soon as the virtual consolidation is done, that's when that's when it's late and it's ballistic. It's doable. Um. The financial structure, obviously, has to be put in place as well as, as well as the government structure, but. The interlocal agreement will will be coming um. Forward at some point in part of this process.
So the sheriff's department.
Just for the know, I mean, it's it's been the push. To have a consolidation for the smallest land mass family in the states, we have. More dispatch centers, so.
The sheriff's been very involved in.
Even in our meeting on Wednesday, we need to support on this.
The only issue I could do with if they're moving over in June or July is I don't know that as a subdivision that. Unless our dispatch is disband at that point, then you're gonna fire and police on separate channels. Or I mean, already in separate sound, the different centers and I can see uh, it's me on wait, make that move. All at once when the county is disband and you're just to wait. So that you're not having your police and fire at two different dispatch centers, so that there's no. Location on top, which is part of me who are trying to merge, but I would I would push that off. That was me anyway, with the mentality I have here, obviously, more meetings than I am about that, but um. Just for that cohesive and insistent. Cause right now they're all in the same room and can talk, but for instance, when we have the. Fire the other day, we zoomed it with a more cohesive thing, which you won't have if you switch your police and self dispatch them. Wait, and then they're still gonna have to call in Davis to dispatch us until that will transmit to me. But those would be.
Yeah, everything's dire now. It's not a die. From a, from a financial standpoint, again, budget, finding and budget conversation. Um, we are currently budgeting. I believe ten thousand dollars for dispatch services. Um, chances are this would go up. Would it go up substantially? I don't know. Substantial meaning. Five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, right? So from a total dollar spend, it will, it'll be in that area, but. What it will be exactly, I don't know.
What's up there? What's it gonna be there?
I guess it's gonna be anywhere between one thousand and a hundred thousand.
And I said one thing about this. Kudos to the council. Um, prior member, maybe not, not this last December, but December prior. I came to you to get you guys to. Or at least have the conversation about joining with Leighton, what they were doing with their station alerting stuff. By us. Jumping on that and joining Leighton, we saved easily sixty thousand dollars, cause all these other departments. Are now playing catch up and Dave can tell you this. Trying to get their station alert again for all of this to go live. We're done while everyone else is in panic mode. And we saved a bunch of money because we got on, we lived there. So thanks for. Getting behind that and supporting that.
It's not all hundred and seventy.
Any other questions about dispatch? Okay, we're uh. Moving on then. Parks priority list, the uh, Parks Committee has been. Meeting and talking through this. I will kind of hand this one over to Joel for leader. But I've got some slides that actually show the list as we've developed it. Um, obviously, the major budget conversation. Is that we're trying to figure out money for, you know, the public works building and so. Capital projects for the parks. Everything after that discussion feels like, well, where are we ever gonna get money for that? So I know that that is the feeling that we all have, but. Um, I can click, but it's just by parks and we've gone through and it's a work in progress.
We go through the the details of it. Um. The idea was to be able to just go through the parks. Kind of make a list of what is needed to be fixed, um, areas that aren't being serviced right now in the parks, things that. That need to be upgraded, um, and then kind of a vision for what that park was going to end up to be. Um, the concept is that we can then make a plan that. Uh, whether it's five years, ten years, fifteen years, we kind of know now, here's as money. Comes available. We can now put it for some of these and most of them you can see are. Um, things like uh, small projects that we can do cleaning up around the. The the cemetery and whatnot. Others, yeah, there are a grand amount of money. Uh, nothing like Draper's new, you know, Tower of Fun that they've got out there, but they also were able to do that with a hundred percent. But it's it's an all um, ADA. Playground. And they were able to get all of it done with grants. So it off, it gives us the opportunity that if we look at long term, we can start looking for grants that might fill the need. For some of these and who knows, maybe we can get some of them done without having to do um, much of any city money. Um. But yeah, as you can see, we've got a a pretty good list of. Uh, what might work and what might not. But uh, we combined it with the last list um, that uh, the previous Parks Group. Uh, committee that kind of put together.
So that's where the orange items are. Those were previous. Those items that were on the previous Park Priority List. I know the last one actually went to the council for. Kind of the blessing and say, yes, we want to work on that. So. Um, we probably need to have this as some, an official item at some point to say, yes, this is the the list that we wanna work on, right? Whether it's as money comes available or some other plan. The intention also is that. We'll look at how much of each one of the parks have been. Uh, used, so we're gonna be looking at whether people are even using the park or not, and then whether the. Um. Demographic around it meets what's being put into it. So we still have a lot more work, well. It does more work definitely before we bring it in, but obviously there's no rush to it because. Now that we've gone out, gone to each one of the parks and have an idea of what we need to do, um, some of the stuff that is maintenance, we can go and start working on. But it needs to be budgeted for next year as part of the maintenance budget. Um, and then the others. Yeah, city council will just sit down and kind of take a look and say, okay, uh, this is where we ought to think we ought to be spending it. So. Pretty simple concept. So anyways, it'll take about sixteen million. Give or take.
We haven't bid it out the the rubber that we'd be putting underneath the swing fence, but. But we haven't cut all the trees we were gonna plant, so we're. We're selling our trees for after logs right now, so.
Where are new trees? Are they coming?
No.
I heard they've been grown.
Yes, they are.
Those down is replaced by two now.
We we had a bunch of trees that did go down because of the disease. Um, and we we've talked about how we're going to be able to to fund those right now. And this is a a thing that is. Something considered as that. We looked at the park's actual budget of operation and maintenance. And that's where we normally are able to do a lot of these kind of things. Um. We're spending that already just to be able to survive at this point. There is nothing. I mean, we we've already gone through, there's no extra parts, it's nothing like that that we're gonna be able to do. This is a real tight budget, so. We're looking at being able to pull that completely separate from any type of projects that we're gonna do, so that as. Um, the public works needs more. For their equipment, for their items, we know that that's just under that line of budget. And then we'll have another one that we use for uh, improvements as we go along.
When we are putting together a tree plan, I might have ten year tree plan. We'll put together maps and you guys all get a chance to. Throw it's art where you want a tree. Really, it'll be, you know, how many we do each year and. Really, it'll be, you know, how many we do each year and what type. I wanna get an arborist to look him over and.
Well, you're so excited about it.
You know I am.
I will say, when it comes to parks projects, um, the rap tax needs to be addressed and that is. Uh, we estimated sixty thousand a year for ten years. Um, so far that's coming in higher than what we estimated, which is wonderful, but. The budget year that we're currently in, the plan was not. To earmark that for anything and spend it, it was let's build that up a little bit, and that is still, you know. The working philosophy, whether that changes during, you know, the next few months as we go through the budget process. That's, you know, yet to be determined by the council, but. Um, it is good news that that we are going to have that. Which is specifically earmarked for parks over the next, you know, ten years and we tell. That ends or gets re-voted on. So, good news. Well, if we add it to you, then we get to the next item, so let's talk about the quints. This is more of Derek said, kind of a heads up, right? That this is a an item that uh. We need to be thinking about or at least knowing that it's on the radar. Um, as Mac and Derek and I have talked about this. What was done previously. Was for the last fire truck purchase that we had, which again is not a ladder truck, it's just an engine. But that was for a period of time, set money aside and then purchased. And so. If that's the same process that we want to go through, or. You know, now with the vehicle lease, initially when we did the vehicle lease program, municipal lease, the thought was leave the big apparatus out of it. Now we feel like if if there's an option there potentially to include it in the vehicle lease. Um, there are, there are different, there are different options there as it comes to this, but. The number that we've been given um as a quote. Uh, from Pierce and Rosenbauer. That's why it's one point one to one point six, cause that was the difference in the two quotes.
I do recall us setting the money up aside. I thought we continued to put that money aside.
We've been putting, the question is how do we finance it? We've been putting some aside. But then we start with then. Does the money we're putting aside, where does the money for the leased vehicles come from? Is that supposed to come out of that or is that gonna be an additional hundred thousand?
So I, and I always thought we were putting that money aside. That we continue to put it aside for the fire department.
For the fire department. For the fire department, but is that only for? For the one large vehicle or is it for all or part of all of their trucks that were leased? But with the one option would be is to. Uh, look at this and say, cause Derek's plan. Was you keep one front line for ten years, I'm I'm gonna make sure, and then back up. So every year you're paying the same amount on the big one, you spread the cost over ten years. You pay it off in ten years, but you keep paying the same amount, so that the quin after ten years will go to the thing and then you get. A new engineer, and so you allocate a certain amount. For this large vehicle through the lease program. All the the time through, how much that is on top of what we're currently doing, so. Yes, there is some, this was the only program in the city that was ever. Put in place, which you're putting any money aside for capital project. And so that's the discussion, the biggest part of it, most more important part is what Derek is addressing. Is uh. This is one of those, how was two years on the previous one, wasn't it? Your back one, you had to order and it took us two years to get. And this is one that has a four-year order time. And so when you have to look at it and then how much do you have to pay at the beginning? And stuff, that'll be a financial discussion, how do we? When do you make the payments and so forth, but. Um. We just have to put it on the radar, start looking about it. Uh, and I'm sure the. The longer the chin way. Part of it is to, once we order, we lock in the price.
Right, and prices are getting ready to go up. And both Pierce and Rosenbauer said they'd be happy to come, their council meeting. Answer the question.
Because my understanding was is our auxiliary building is full.
So once this arrives four years from now. The current nineteen ninety-three engine that we have. Yes, a little smoky, cause they didn't know you couldn't be in Smokey back then. Yes, M O K Y is how you spell Smokey of the nineties. Anyway, that aside, that engine would then be sold off. And then engine, current engine one would rotate into the reserve position, and so the quin would then be in.
So my question is though, is does it really replace an engine? Or, I mean, you're not gonna roll that out. No, a a ladder type truck out for a regular fire call, are you?
You mean like any structure.
Before you would roll a regular.
Well, cause we're gonna, it's gonna have, the reason it's a quin and not a truck is because it holds. So a truck has, a true truck has no water, no hose, a quin actually will still have the same size water tank, the same hose. And can operate as both, and that's why a lot of departments go that way. It's cause they can operate as an engine or a truck.
Cause that that was my question is. Are we not gonna be in more of a lean in four, six years for another engine like we just bought? Or we need a quin, but if it actually folds.
Yeah, that's why we want to go with quin versus the true truck.
Four hundred thousand, no. Oh, we paid more, we paid, we paid four hundred and fifty thousand in. For our engine, they bought. No. That's what we've done back in twenty seventeen. You have to remember what Derek just said, is that cost uh four hundred and six, four hundred and sixty. Four sixty was a twenty seventeen price. And so we're talking, we're now six years later. And we all know what prices on everything have gone up just in this last year, and so. You can't say four sixty-five to this, you know, you you gotta come up.
Year alone, Pierce raised its price to thirty-two percent. Just last year alone.
This is the most stressful meeting ever.
So if we were, say, order one of these now and it's not gonna come for four years. Can they raise that price up between?
That's why we want to lock the price in, and that's why. No, and that's why we wanted to have this conversation in this meeting, so we can know. Are we going the lease route or are we gonna skip to the purchase route? But really to take, take delivery and budget year fiscal year twenty twenty-eight. We should be ordering by the end of the year. And the design process alone is gonna take us well into somewhere in the fall.
Okay, so a couple of questions on that. If the the four year is whether we buy it or lease it, they build to suit our city.
Bill times the same, right?
So in ten years, if we're on a lease. Are we going to sell ours? Or does it just go back to them? We haven't ever paid it all off, it's just gonna be rotating like a car lease, right?
No, no, it's just be financed, so at the end of the ten years, it's ours, free and clear, we have title. At the end of ten years, that goes into the backup position. And a new vehicle at the end of ten years would go as, for example.
If needed.
At the end of the ten years, the plan has a ten year for each for the for this type of vehicle. So for example, you get the new one, it replaces the old, old Smokey. Okay, at the end of ten years on this new quin. Uh, that. That one that's sitting there, what year do you call it? The green one? The green one, that's would go to the backup position. Every year, they buy them over a ten year period, every ten years, a new vehicle comes in and the oldest one gets sold out. And the one that was you've been paying for for ten years goes into ten years as the backup vehicle.
So yeah, your C class a twenty year lifespan.
Thank you, that's what I'm trying to ask.
So can you sell me on why we really need this?
Can, in fact, I included it in my other slide. If you, if you lease it for cheap money, those will do, if you lease it for. If it has a life of twenty years, do you lease it and pay payments on it in twenty years? But then you have to turn it in after ten.
Reality, it's a finance. Of the total cost and you spread the total cost over a ten year period. And and at the end of ten years, you own it and there is no, there is no balloon payment at the end, there is no. Uh, you don't turn it in, you're just a financier for ten years.
So it's important, I guess the big life safety reasons you want it is let's take the apartments for any, that they have in town that are. That aren't sprinkled, right? So we didn't record, require them to do that at the time. And you have a fire that starts on the second floor and traps the people on the third floor, only way we're getting them out is with an aerial apparatus. Or they jump. Or like the the pictures.
I mean, like if this were to happen, true, what would you do?
Right, we would call for the aerial apparatus, right? But. So that's the life safety component, it also plays in our ISO score, which saves citizens money, but. The big reason we want it is for, like the the pictures that I had up. You use a quin for a lot more things than just rescuing people out windows, right? Uh, defensive fires, you use them for shrink protection, in fact, if we can go to that pic, either the picture you had or the other picture I had of the one fire. That air lap. So the stick that's up here right now, Riverdale truck. Was being used to protect the home to the right and the home that was actually actually building. And so you can put that nozzle on that quin in a place to protect that structure that you're not gonna commit personnel to, because it's not safe. So there's lots of different utility. And reasons why we would want our own here in town, because there's no guarantee you're gonna have a ladder truck available. In fact, we learned that on our fire just down the street. The other day. Where Riverdale wasn't available, sent a ladder and we didn't end up needing ladder, it was a small house and. We gotta get stuff on it, but. We shouldn't, the big takeaway is we shouldn't be relying on other people. Cause there's nothing worse than showing up knowing you need to rescue someone or take care of an issue. And you can't because you're waiting for someone else to come from wherever.
I totally hear that, I just. This is huge, I mean, we're over here, I yelled at Joel and I told Joel.
Luckily, we've been planning for this, or less.
But not with the cost that it's currently going to, right?
Well. That's that's up for debate, but a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year should should have been going towards the purchase of a quin. And so.
I'll be honest though, I've never heard you say quin before this meeting. And I've been injured for five years.
Nobody has, it's been part of every.
We've talked about the truck, but I don't, I don't know if it's the word quin, but we've talked about still continuing to put money aside.
And it's been part of every tenure capital project plan, it's been part of every vehicle replacements program that I've put in. Uh, and so I'm not, I'm just saying, I've put it out there a ton, if you don't remember, I apologize for not doing it enough, but. It's been part of the plan since. Twenty fifteen.
But if we're, if we're to put the order in now, I'm not saying. What what do you have to give them to commit to that order? Do we have four years to figure out how to save money and pay for a bulk of this?
Right.
Or do we decide it's gonna be on a lease program, do we? What's the detail?
Right, so you have to do like an upfront deposit, but it's, it's not full price or anything. And so that gives us four years to save.
That's how we had to do the truck.
We need to, we need to figure out the detail, right? If it's purchase or lease, what that amount would be of the the down payments.
And and there would have been more conversations we'd have to this. But build times even on quints haven't always been four years. But just because of supply chain issues, everything's been pushed back, and so. We would have, we would have lubricated this conversation a lot more if it weren't for the fact that. Rosenbauer and Pierce were like, no, we got four year build plans right now, which puts us, like I said, fiscal year twenty twenty. Or twenty twenty-eight is truly July twenty twenty-seven. We need to start looking at ordering now, is why this is coming up.
So from this meeting, I heard we've got a quin that we need. And ten years from now, we're still gonna be continuing it on with the next engine truck. We just finished a lot of renovation or in the middle of renovations down at the fire department itself. Um, do we have any other capital items? That are looking for the next ten, fifteen years that are fire department related?
I put those in this PowerPoint. So the big things we're gonna be looking at is. Getting the kitchen fixed. So like I said.
Trying to remodel and the.
And then the other thing is the air compressor, because by twenty. Twenty-nine, that compressor is gonna be. Past, it's already past its lifespan, but I'm trying to milk it for as long as I can.
So the. Went. And I know you're gonna, you're gonna knife me in the back when I walk outside. Is there any chance of a used one?
Not in green. And we learned this lesson is you typically end up needing your costs in maintenance. We learned that with the old nineteen seventies ladder truck we had.
And we learned it in several ways.
Right.
A million six in maintenance?
We're not gonna spend a million six, that's the quote from Pierce and I I wouldn't come to the council with a million six purchase. Just to be clear. Well, because you're gonna see that number when I bring Pierce's bid in. And I don't wanna bring Pierce's bid in at one point six and have you guys be, well, you never said one point six, well, you're hearing one point six. So you see Pierce's number and you're like, Derek, why didn't you tell us one point six, now you've heard one point six from me. So. There you go, that's why, that's what may hide, so the council, when they approved our engine. They approved five hundred thousand dollars and we went through with the fighting tooth code, a lot of you know. And we dropped forty-five thousand dollars off the five hundred thousand through. There, I'm gonna do the same here and save us as much money as I feel we can. But that's what we're looking at.
So you really, when we're talking about finding something to use out there. Do you think there's a chance we could look and find something that's decent, that's only a ten year old? Versus anything older or you're just saying there really no way?
There's a hundred percent we can go by, we can go back to buying used vehicles, we can. But when we had to replace the the giant pistons on the last plant. It costs us, it costs us four times as much as we spent on buying the apparatus. And so we we can, we can go down that route, I'm not saying we can, I'm just, that's a financial decision for you all to make is.
Just like our first.
Learning experience, it was a bargain until we had to. Turn paid more to like three times the cost of what we bought.
We did the same thing. Their maintenance nightmare.
But what what kind of lease grants are we getting right now?
Well, that's the problem we ran into with the old quid is the standards change. There are certain standards that if you, if you are the sole owner and operator of that apparatus. Then you're grandfathered in because you're falling under the codes that you bought it in, the problem comes on the resale. That's why we couldn't sell our old quid to another fire department. Because it wasn't meeting any current standard, so the second that vehicle changes hands, any grandfather you had is now gone. And so you're also limiting your life. Yeah.
You donate it for parts or something?
The old ladder truck?
Yeah.
We did an end user agreement with.
Well, that's right.
With TNT.
That's right.
And uh, so it's still parked down there, some dude uses it. He stripped it, but uh, it would have gone for like four hundred dollars if I hadn't been down there grabbing the cost there.
Storage wars.
Twenty years. Twenty year line, the standards changed during that twenty years. That we, South Weaver still ends it and still use it and so forth, and at the end of twenty years. There might not be a whole lot of value in the resale at the end of a twenty year old fire truck. But South Weaver, why only that can get a lot of use out of it as. Those last ten years where we need the backup vehicles or the second vehicle. It doesn't just sit there the last change.
Well, and just when we looked at. An issue about the engine, we looked at buying a used quid instead, because we do have a need for a quid, and the reason the city bought the nineteen seventy four plant was because we took apartments in. But it's like, oh, it doesn't work, it doesn't work, doesn't matter if I have a part of the station, if I can't get the stick in the air on a fire, then. All it is is a giant heavyweight or a paperweight maybe, and uh. Use, just to give you a perspective, used aerial apparatus at the time, we're still going between three and three and four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and so question, are there ladder trucks without water?
You can, but that goes back to the the question Blair had, is you can buy a true truck. But then you're losing a bunch of the utility of what we'd want to clean, and honestly, you're not really gonna save that much money here.
But the only reason we're getting the quid is for the water though, right? There's not like a list of other things in it that really is gonna make a difference for us here in South Weaver.
The aerial.
The aerial, so that's the ladder, so a truck with a ladder. Yeah, that's, so you you can't. You can't plug an engine with a ladder and a hose into a fire hydrant. And do the exact same thing that a quid does.
No, you cannot plug it from a hydrant, in fact, the only way you can do it with a truck that's non-engine. Like we do in Salt Lake is you have to have an engine feeding that truck.
Okay.
Because you have to be able to control that flow and you're not controlling that flow with a pump through the hydrant. So you then need two apparatus to do the function of one, which is why the fire service kind of created the quid, so it can be the best of both worlds or the. Created this or okay at this and okay at this, but it does both versus created one or the other.
Okay.
And and not that, oh, because everybody else has one, so we need one. Everyone in Davis County has one and even Mountain Green and Morgan who are volunteer fire departments both have. Happen.
Yeah.
We're we're virtually, not virtually, we are the only department around here without.
Drive around and look if you want, but. Well, this, the apartments are the three level.
Right.
And are you kind of supposed to have one?
Yeah. But again, having one that doesn't work, right? That's why we got rid of the one that we had. Was because we're like, yeah, we have it, but good luck getting it to operate.
So I thought I heard you say that of your.
Especially if we're gonna keep, you know.
How high can it, how many is the risk?
So the ones, I've been looking at getting the, what I would love is a hundred and seven foot stick, but. Because I know we're tied on cash, I've been getting bids on seventy five foot stick.
What does that save us?
A seventy five versus a hundred and seven, probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's one just for extension.
And the reason why is, it's right, had we, had we stuck, not we, I'm not. It wasn't the spot at the side of this, but had the lofts moved forward with their five story buildings. I would be asking for a hundred and seven foot stick. But if we can keep, if we can not go that high ever again and keep it. Like apartments or what they're suggesting up there with three story townhomes, seventy five should be sufficient. Yeah, so.
You're off, you're on the road, right? And so you gotta get.
Yeah, you're not, you're not operating it straight up. Yeah. So I I guess we never did, so I need purchase.
I think we need to figure out what the down payment would be, if there's a difference between lease or purchase.
My rec- my recommendation, my personal recommendation is to take. Take the castle down to ten years and do what we call a lease. And so, you know, whether we have to, how work, how that structures in with the ordering and so forth. But looking at the need and the on, the ongoing need. Once you say we committed, because there's all, there's so many there and there's gonna be things. I look at it, if you're doing the million dollar, roughly million dollar truck, you're probably gonna be putting in for ten years. Say a hundred thousand dollars a year and you just know for now on, it's always a hundred thousand dollars, the price will go up at the end of that. But you'll also have some interest earning from the money and you're doing those things. And you just say, here's the commitment, a hundred thousand dollars towards the quid and. A maximum and that's going up for the next thirty thirty years, forty years and start doing it that way. And then and with Derek's plan that he's presented a long time ago, and I saw it.
I get this feels like it's like hot on the hills of our other purchase.
It's hot on the hills of all purchases.
I understand that, it's been a while, the only reason, again, it's only being brought up so soon just because of the long build times right now.
And I understand that and I appreciate that.
So and and.
But it doesn't make the flight test any better.
And the price too, okay?
Yeah, the price goes up. Uh, Rosenbauer's price because of Mark's.
So is it a matter of figuring out what the down payment would have to be or the run amount?
Let's let's leave it. Cause we gotta, even if we, we gotta put a down payment down to order the truck. And we're not gonna forerest that money until we have to.
Well, we already have two hundred twenty five thousand dollars in a fund that can go towards that down payment.
Unless Max spends it somewhere else, Max spends, like you said, it was determined whether that was paid for your other truck or not.
But we, well, we had to talk with the financing company to say, okay, if we're gonna end this. Hold on that, you know, we can, if we're going to finance it, we'll work out. Work the down payment into the toll, how we work the lease for the finance, but you know, whichever you want, so that's. Just the mechanics of how to finance it and when we have to come up. But I, whether we have to pay a down payment or not, I would hope the entire thing would be. The same group of payments and and not have to say, okay, we're only gonna finance. With two hundred, we have to come up with and we finance eight hundred thousand. We finance the whole and we just plan it over this as period, so. Yeah, it's it's mechanics of that, but it's. I, it's, to me, it's a lot easier to swallow an ongoing payment, that's why we might let the leases. An ongoing cost to have the equipment that we need as opposed to. A rotating cycle where this year we gotta come up with a million dollars and then you go a few years and you know.
Saving it, so the same dollar amount that we're saving. And we continue to do that, I mean, that's my question, have we truly continued to do that?
Well, we did part of, we've been taking part of that money and paying the current, reducing by current.
I also thought we had a separate vehicular budget. One time, two separate budgets.
So if best case scenario, we should. Uh, twenty twenty eight, we should have had one point one zero five million dollars in that fund to pay for multiple visits, if not all of it.
But instead that's going to the current vehicles that we would just.
A portion of it. Part of it has been a portion.
So here, here, here financially, here's what, here's what. If you want to keep a hundred and fifteen thousand only for this truck. Then you've got to come up with another approximately eighty thousand dollars a year to cover your list vehicles.
And how do we do that?
For this year's budget, let's say we're deciding to lease it. We've gotta come up with the hundred thousand, it's it's basically one line item that we're gonna be coming up with, that's a lease. We don't have, we're no longer putting like an asset protection fund together, we're not putting that in there, but yeah, but we need one.
Well, we can keep doing that in the lease, we still have assets that we have to replace in there, so you're not doing away with a budget line. Yeah, the lease wouldn't, we wouldn't start paying on a lease. Until we take delivery of the vehicle.
Unless we do what Marcus said by taking the budget, if we're gonna borrow two hundred thousand for the down payment.
Well, that's not, that's money that was set aside for whatever you have.
Not pulling it out of the fund.
I'm just saying that money is already sitting there that's in that fund, right?
The two hundred. Not if we didn't have a budget for the rest of your leased vehicles.
No, it it's on, it's it's.
That's what's, that's the balance in the budget right now.
Is two hundred and something, right?
And then we will budget each year for the lease vehicles, that two hundred is the down payment. Each month you're promoting that lease vehicles. And then once you add the quid's lease, you'd have to increase the hundred and fifteen. Or whatever needs to go up to cover the all these vehicles. But I'm not sure it's, I but I don't think it's gonna be a full hundred thousand dollars ago additional, it will be.
Just to simplify it, what we really need to decide is are we gonna keep putting money in a vehicle replacement program to purchase heavy apparatus? Or does the council want us to move heavy app, heavy apparatus to lease program? It's really just. The simplest way to boil this.
My personal opinion, if 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 we decide to go with the quid, let's say it's two separate effects. You would put it on the lease program.
Okay.
Because we're trying to come up with that, but I still think we need to have your smaller apparatus. And all those fun, we still need to start budgeting replaced the item. Cause it's it's hitting us way too far off. I mean, whether it's not a hundred thousand dollars anymore that we were putting in there like we were every year before. Well, maybe it's twenty thousand dollars or whatever, but something has to be done so that. We're not trying to figure out how to buy radios for thirty thousand dollars that we don't have.
Well, and the radios and those stuff moving forward, and we've done this with all our new purchases are rolled into the price of that lease. And are married to those vehicles. No, I I I get what you're saying, I.
So here's where I'm saying, I agree with what you're saying.
Guys, let Angie speak.
So here we are trying to figure out, how do we raise property taxes and storm? The water fees and sewer fees and all this stuff to pay for something that public works is like. Dire, dire, dire need of. How do we pay for that? And now with this, it's let's put another hundred thousand dollars a year. From where?
Right.
Your avocat in front of apartment, you get that, totally appreciate it. But it's hard for me to say, okay, let's buy a new ladder truck. When like, you don't know how we're paying for this, let's raise this.
But that that's, that's why the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that should have not been touched. Would have paid for this and that's what it was intended for and that's what was planned for, is that money going in every year. So that way, when we hit that mark, that money's already there, we're not trying to come up with fancy finance ways to do it. The whole point of the replacement program was so that money was acorned away every single year. The fact that it got touched by the lease program, we can hash that out a different day, shouldn't have been, okay? Then the, this would have been a super easy conversation of, we've been putting money away for this purchase. We have the money set aside for it, we're making that purchase. So if we can make that fund hold and then adjust it with inflation moving forward. That's why for me, the conversation needs to be, do we wanna keep doing that where we're putting money away for future purchases? Or do we wanna do the lease program, I feel like we're getting some financial effect on the backend. So again, this should have been a way easier conversation than it's become.
No.
But we continue it and put it away.
Right.
And delay it, just like we're having, the the other conversation was we're gonna delay the whole, we're building.
Right.
Which.
And they'll say, if we did that, we'd have money for your engine.
If you say. It's gonna be the same thing you're you're learning with public works that we learn with my building, that we've learned with. The other departments are learning what their dispatch is used is. We can say, hey, let's move this purchase back three years. But then we're eating that free year increasing cost.
Yeah.
And so I I get it's not, again, it's not an easy decision to make. That's just, that's me presenting the need and and honestly. It it was a, this plan, the the ten year, the twenty year lifespan with a ten year rotation, that's been. Approved. For years. That's been, that's been the plan, it's just, we've got to hit go.
Well, remember, we're not, I, at least I'm not. Saying it's not needed, not saying that this isn't something that you guys want or anything like that.
Right.
But I mean, we have to be honest, instead of using the word budget, we're talking taxes, there's no other way. It's not like we're just gonna suddenly go.
Necessarily, because if we were budgeting a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars now. And if you do the math on what you're paying, even if it's a full one point six and you're fifteen thousand a year, that's. Whatever that is, but we're close to our hundred and forty thousand dollars that we're already currently budgeting for that, that would be your payment for that truck.
But then there won't be any more um, set up for new truck payments for anything.
They already have a lease, we have to have it.
The problem, the problem was, here's the situation. Hey, I looked at it as a hundred and fifteen for the program. The vehicle program, not just for the, so when we added the lease program in it. We use that money to cover the leases. Okay, now if we were keeping a hundred and fifteen in for every year. Okay, now if we were keeping a hundred and fifteen in for every year. Then the lease program should have been, the budget should have gone up roughly another sixty or seventy thousand dollars. To cover the new lease program, which was a new program that wasn't funded previously. And so the budget should, the budget should have gone up a year ago.
Yeah.
So what I'm just saying is, was mistake, if mistake, you look at a mistake, we should have. Done a hundred and fifteen plus, because we went up, plus the new money for the lease program in this last budget. Okay, so what I'm just saying is, you still got an increase on that, the amount, whether you call it. It's for the lease program plus the hundred and fifteen. I was thinking at the time when we were looking at him, we took it from eighty-five to a hundred and fifteen, I believe it was. It was the job, and that was to incorporate, to add also the lease program into it. So. You know, that's the way I looked at it. And we didn't increase, we didn't put, we didn't add the lease on top of a hundred and fifteen when we budgeted. Does that make sense, Blair?
So what are you saying, we need more, seventy-five thousand more to increase our budget this year?
If we're gonna put a hundred and fifteen in plus the lease program, you're gonna need to take the total program up to probably about a hundred and fifty. Yes, they have a hundred fifty.
And that's because of the lease, the payment of the, that if was a quid.
Now, if you're, if you're going to do, put the quid on a lease program. We don't, with that seventy-five thousand dollar increase, will not occur until we start making the quid payments.
Yeah.
And we keep the hundred and fifteen going to the lease, and what doesn't go to the lease remains in his fund. To, for the down payment or to reduce the amount of the payments. Of the, of the quid being financed. Because we're not spending the four hundred and fifteen every year.
Do you compare it to that?
That's where there's. There was a miscommunication at some point, a hundred and fifteen thousand could never supposed to be touched for anything other than heavy apparatus.
And all of this, that's something to do with the budget, including myself.
And, and the lease program was supposed to be completely separate from the vehicle replacement program.
See, they sound like they're the same, right?
They shouldn't have ever been the same.
Well, they could have been if we knew, if we're designing the lease, they could still.
If we had chose the lease, and we decided to purchase, the purchase pool should have been separate from the lease pool.
Yeah.
And that didn't happen.
It's like we've never thought about leasing the big truck.
We, well, I mean, that.
Yeah.
Last two months.
We bought a big engine and that was the whole process when, you know, can't, you know, the idea to, to put that. Aside until we can afford the engine.
Right.
So.
Buying a brush truck for a hundred and twenty grand, it's a lot different conversation than a quid for a one point six. And that's why that fund was supposed to. Be separate and protected because of how big of a hit it is financially for the city, that's why we were trying to spread it out over time.
So we can get back to that, again, the question, we could get back to that if we wanted to, or we can say, we're just gonna make it all one program. Either way, it's the same dollar table. Things kind of dollar amount, that, that's, I think, the important part.
Philosophy conversation.
Is it one plot or is it a perfect similar lease plot and they're different, but they're similar dollar.
Had everything gone perfectly smooth, like I said, and there wasn't the miscommunication issues, this would have been funded.
Not by now.
Not now, but I'm saying by the time, like twenty twenty-eight. Right.
We'll get the details on what this down payment would need to be, right? What's the upfront amount? You said eighty? In order to put the order in, right? The goal is to put that order in this year and do that somewhat soon to try to hit before prices change. Then we would need to, we would need to know what that upfront amount is. Right away. So that's what we need to work on.
Yeah.
For the record, I haven't talked about a ladder truck, I just can't realize it.
Okay, one more budget item, and this one um hopefully can be fairly quick. We've talked about this concept before that as development occurs, there's a city portion of these projects. Right, when, for example, Old Port Road, when Old Port Road goes in and, and the development down there happens. Um, we can exact from the developer a certain amount based on our standards. Of, you know, road width or pipe size or whatnot. But when we want to upsize that as a, as a collector road or as a regional or something like that. Then that upsizes the city's portion. So these are the projects that we've identified um in the future that would have an element kind of like that. Or have some other element that would be a city portion, so. Starting at the top, twenty-seven hundred east, you know, Brandon brought up earlier that he's trying to get the elevation, the horizontal and vertical. Locations of where the road width would need to be, so that the uh current applicant. Who wants to develop that can know exactly where to design their project and their property. So that that one has a need to be a higher than what originally thought, so this needs to be an arterial road or, which ever. Twenty-seven hundred east. We can require a developer to build a residential road.
Right.
When we need it to be bigger than.
Yeah, we're saying that it needs to be bigger than that.
Yes, the twenty-seven hundred east concept plan that we've talked about that has wider width. Um, the city will have to come up with, will have to purchase essentially. Um, some of that right of way from the property owner, because we cannot exact it from them. Right, so um what standard are we using to say it needs to be increased? Brandon, can you answer that?
What standard?
Yeah, as I wonder, what's the determining criteria to say that the.
Trapping. Projected. You, so maybe you don't remember that, that we, I don't remember what. When it was, we broke it, was it August?
Uh, you were here.
Part of the transportation master plan, that's the um W C D is working on. We asked them to, to dial down to twenty-seven hundred east. Knowing that, that there's undeveloped ground on the east side and knowing that that length between South Weaver Drive and seventy-eight hundred. Um. Is, has, has potential for a lot of traffic in a short amount of time or distance. So we asked them to look at, we wanted to be prepared.
And that would lower its service rate, right?
Right, yeah, level of service, um. And so, yes, level of service is the, is the terminology that's used, and there's a certain number, you know, traffic counts. They go with an A, B, C, D, E. Um. So in the future, that was projected to be below level of service C. Um, so the plan would, would, for that section would be to go to a five lane road. And so the, the width of the road plus having, you know, curving gutter and sidewalk. For a full right of way would be larger than. Than uh standard residential road. So there's that, that upsize. Um, is covered at least in part by um impact. That goes into the analysis of how we establish their dollar figure for the impact.
What's that road considered now?
A level of service? Uh, right now, you, you, well, you have three right at the intersection, but then it airs up to two.
Okay, yeah, now I remember this, this is the one we're, we're doing the roundabout.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everybody was pretty happy about it.
This isn't, this isn't the purpose of planning, right? See, we can. Be prepared. For when the day comes when you need something and you want to be ready for it.
Is today that day, Brandon?
Not yet. But today is the day that we're bringing the need forward.
You said in part. Might impact fees.
At least in part, they, they're, they're, I mean, there could be a, a large portion of that. That's calculated based on um the actual financial analysis or what the, the total upsize cost is. And how much they can put towards. That, because there's still an element that that widening provides um some benefit to the existing residents.
Well, and when the, the, the lower part of that, and I just said if it. Has to go five lane eventually, the upper main, we can kick down the road for a while.
But he said up to the southern.
Southern, no, I'm saying the.
Blair, you need some more help over there, most due.
I do. The, the north portion of the intersection, South Weaver Drive and twenty-seven hundred east definitely has to get impacted eventually. Sooner or later with what is being proposed.
Right, I, I, there's, you can look at a lot of cities who have commercial right at the throat. Of their main entrance through their cities. Uh, no, nobody has anything less than a five lane road. Um, so that's, that's, I guess that shouldn't come as a shock. When you, you need a lot of access to the adjacent properties and, and I think. It's best to try to plan that out now and get those access locations in the best location you can do. Um. So that you don't regret having not thought about that someday in the future. And that's to protect. The existing residents now, right? You, we want everybody to be able to get in, get to their home. Without feeling frustrated every time they go through that intersection or that, that length of road, but we often want all of the. The people who are gonna come and spend their money here, but they don't live here, to be able to get in and out as well.
So today, right now, we're discussing what specifically for twenty-seven hundred east? How much money we're gonna subside for?
Well, we're, we're giving you a heads up, this is a, when the developer comes, which they put in an application recently. Right, this was a theoretical conversation until this recently, that. They need to know where the road is gonna be, where the right of way ends that we're gonna request. If we are requesting farther into their property, because it needs to be a wider lane, wider road. Than what is typical, something we can request or require, then we're gonna have to pay for that. That, that's what we're suggesting, what that amount is will have to be determined through a break and through the development process. But that, that is, that is what we're giving you a heads up for, for the twenty-seven hundred east. That there will be a city portion of that.
You, you could allow the development to just go in, not require the additional width, they'll build whatever they build. And then you come back later and you tear all of that out and widen the road, and that just seems like, you know, financial suicide.
And then you were saying, this, this changes the impact fees also, because besides what that road's going to be, and how much it's going to be, and then all the impact fees.
Right, that's what W C D has done, or, or what they, what, when it's approved. That's what will be in that analysis, we currently have one on the books that we're collecting impact fees for. Um, twenty-seven hundred east is in the new one and will be accounted for accordingly.
And didn't we determine that we were already pushing all that right away to the end?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a fairly.
We've got two lane right now.
Right.
We're gonna increase it to five.
No.
That is, there are gonna be properties that have to be.
It's, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good um chunk of ground, yes, um but, but I think they can still do what they're proposing.
How far up is it white?
Uh, yeah, seventy-eight, where we're showing a roundabout, and the reason for the roundabout is because. We're proposing to limit left turn movements. So the only way for people to go that direction is.
Anyway, we can have the discussion when it comes up, cause under. Does it have, I mean, if we, we've always talked about a right turn lane there. Does it have to go a five lane? I mean, instead of, right now, we're.
You just said it did. He did need help.
The traffic engineers have said that.
Yeah, that, that's what we hired them to do, that's their recommendation, and so, I guess.
And it's what we have approved.
Yeah. The, the point, we're not trying to rehash the decision.
Okay.
We're just trying to give you a heads up that development is, is. And because of the application, it's driving the need to actually purchase. They're separate funds.
It doesn't mean that we are building the, the road, we're just acquiring the right of way, securing the right of way.
Because that, what they'll do is they'll bring in a plan that will dedicate all this additional right of way. And that, that's, that's going to happen with their development now.
And that's where their curbing gutter will be.
Yes, their, their new, the curbing gutter will, will just stay where it is right now, they'll just, they'll just, they'll put the sidewalk probably back on there, but not. Doesn't access the road as it is now, and then, so in the future, when we decide that.
Oh.
The need has come, that's when you'll actually build the road. But you wouldn't want to not acquire the road and have them build improvements into the upsize.
They don't know the number on what it's gonna be to acquire it.
No, that's gotta go to a crazy.
Seven hundred million, that'll be a, you know, purchasing.
The theme of today's retreat.
Yeah, a little, but it will be in the next couple of months, because we are taking it to planning commission this, this next week. Anticipating at hitting city council by March. Okay, so the next road are a little bit of a different story, but similar concept, that when they happen, there would be a city portion. So Old Port Road, just like the first phase of South Finch Drive, there was city portion, whenever that happens, anticipate that, we don't know when it'll be. And, so you're saying that one is going to be widened also?
We'll have to pay our portion, so the next developer will come through. After that portion of that.
If we want it wider.
For the Old Port Road.
Yes, that's, that's undeveloped. We're not talking about the existing Old Port Road, we're just talking at, as they go from where it ends. Up to and connecting to South Weaver Drive.
Right.
If, if we keep the same cross section, which is what is, you know, in our standards, and that's what we're fighting for. Um, it would be a three lane road, so it's bigger than the two lane road that is our standard residential road, so there. But that goes into the impact fee calculation as well, right?
I just, yeah.
Nine twenty-five and seventy-three seventy-five, that is um when Lane Cap does his development on Lester Drive. And connects with seventy-three seventy-five, we've talked about needing to widen that, again, this is future considerations. Um, if, when that happens, the urgency of that road, right, widening would come. Seventy-six hundred south, that is um affectionately known as Stark Lane, I believe, where it would connect there then.
Oh.
That one's a little bit different, right, it's not development driven, but that's a future road connection that has a city, a city. We're hoping to find oil in the middle of the. That's the end of the financial heavy lifting of today's conversation. Well, I was looking at it and we don't quite have enough cash on hand.
My analysis, that's a great thought.
So Mayor, I leave this to you, right, um the committee priority and then the strategic planning are both items that we could do. We gave ourselves a hard stop.
America.
America.
They said, yeah, then I guess we'll look for a adjourn. Nay, nay, you wanna say? I wanna say.
Nay, nay, you wanna stay, I wanna stay.